See, first note that this is a public hearing. One thing I'm just asking, when you come to the mic, make sure that you speak within the mic. We've gotten some feedback from the public about everybody being able to hear. And likewise for the commissioners also, if you'll make sure that when you speak, you're speaking to the mic. Appeal to the decision pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.03 of the Metropolitan Code of laws. Notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via a statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Are there any council members present? Okay. Motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Approval minutes are done. The first thing we'll listen to is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Okay. Seeing none, if you don't take it away, Sean.
One that comes off is 216 Fairfax Avenue. That was pulled by the applicant.
Okay.
Who can't be here today, but it will still be discussed.
Okay, so it will be part of our new business.
Yeah. Remaining consent items are 1305 Gallatin Avenue, new construction of an addition with setback determination; 1516B Ferguson Avenue, new construction of an addition; 1508 Fordway Place, constructing an outbuilding; 810 Setliff Place, new construction addition; 1409 Sumner Avenue, detached accessory dwelling unit; 1316 Fourth Avenue North, constructing an addition; 3734 Central Avenue, new construction of an addition with setback determinations. Staff has reviewed all of those cases, found that they individually meet their respective design guidelines, and recommends approval of them as a consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Sean about anything on the agenda?
Sean, I don't think we've ever seen a commercial project before. Can you just tell us what's going on with that one, please?
Yeah, that's 1305 Gallatin Avenue. It is a commercially zoned property on the edge of the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. It's a, I mean, it's a gas station on Gallatin Road, and it has been for a long time. They're doing an addition and improvements to the building, and it will remain commercial. I'm not sure the specific use, maybe grocery or something.
I think it's supposed to be some sort of market along Gallatin Avenue. The addition's actually quite small. The existing structure does not meet the setback, because there's a 20-foot rear setback, and it's an accroaching, I don't remember the exact, but it's accroaching a few more feet onto the setback than what is currently.
I didn't realize that the, that the Eastwood went all the way to Gallatin. Is there sort of a parcel in the rear that puts the whole thing in, or does it actually go all the way out?
No, and it's a part of the original Eastwood district that was done several years ago. It's that, and I think the church, the house across the street on the corner of Douglas, the one that faces Gallatin.
Oh, that's in.
And then there's like a gas, not a gas station, a car wash there, and the church are all in.
Oh, okay. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Did we check to see if anyone wanted to take anything off?
Only in the beginning, but in light of that, even though we just approved it, does anybody have any that you'd want to take off? We'd make a special allowance. Okay. Thanks, Robin. Okay, the first order of new business, you don't have to leave. No, just joking. First order of new business is 216 Fairfax Avenue.
As I said, the applicant could not be here, and he and I were still working out some of the conditions of the staff recommendation, which is why it's not on consent. It's an application to construct a rear addition to a historic house, and also to demolish an outbuilding and construct a new outbuilding at the rear of the lot. The addition will be one-story, and it sets in from the sides of the house, and it's compatible in materials, windows. Staff found that the addition met the design guidelines. The new outbuilding will be at the rear of the lot, behind the location of the existing outbuilding. The roof of the garage will be higher than the roof of the house, as you can see in that side view. That's not necessarily inappropriate, because the grade slopes up to the rear. However, it's not just the actual height elevation-wise, it's the relative proportions of the garage that staff found not to be appropriate. The ridge height is taller than the ridge of the, the ridge height above the floor level of the garage is taller than that of the house by one foot, and the eve height of the garage above the floor level is taller by more than three feet compared to the corresponding proportions of the house. Staff found that that scale is not subordinate. Additionally, the design itself, the roof of the building has wall dormers and vertical beadboard siding panels, which, while that also might not be inappropriate in and of itself in a certain location, in this configuration, staff found that it accentuates and exaggerates the height of the building, which is already, staff found, to be inappropriate scale. Overall, staff found that the height and scale did not meet guidelines A, B, or H. The materials, the other materials, however, would be appropriate matching those of the addition. So staff recommends approval of the proposed addition and the demolition of the existing outbuilding, and construction of the new outbuilding with condition that the ridge height and eve height of the garage be lowered so that they're subordinate to that of the house, and that the dormers are of a more compatible form. Lowering the house, the eve might just kind of take care of that. And also for standard condition of staff approval of window selection and doors prior to purchase. With those conditions met, staff finds that this proposal would meet the design guidelines for the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay.
And what were the reasons that, because he requested it be taken off, right?
Yes, they did not want to lower the height of the garage. They, they said that the, they wanted a two-car garage with usable space, and this was their solution to that. They said that their other option would be to do a larger footprint in a one-story garage, which is probably true. However, staff found that the visibility of this garage with eaves that are higher, not only because of grade, but also the floor-to-eve ratio or that proportion is significantly taller than that of the house, staff found that this was not subordinate.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Sean?
Question for staff, which I think maybe helps, or might help the applicant, who knows, is there's basically eight feet to the peak of the roof, or to the underside of the structure in the section on 825. So there's a nine-feet garage height.
The ceiling height, yeah.
Yeah, ceiling height. Certainly, I think you could get some height out of that in a minimally tall garage. But what I wonder is, in lowering, in making this building subordinate to the home, if you reduce the eve height, is there going to be any sort of usable second story? This seems like a both-and objection from staff, which I'm not questioning that, I'm just wondering if the one, the one out that the applicant might have to do some usable space in an outbuilding would be a one-story, and if that's the recommendation, are we going to be okay seeing that, if that's what they come back with? Or are they permitted to do that in this district?
I think that there are a lot of options that maybe they may or may not be interested in, and with them not being here, I can't speak to that.
Of course, of course. If, so if you took a foot, I'm just proposing, if you took a foot out of the height of the first floor, you know, nine-foot clear at the garage, if you took a foot out of that, could that be viewed, or would that be viewed, maybe even a foot six, as subordinate to the house? Seems like that one, that one may be not a workable situation for them, and what we're telling them is a second story on top of the garage just probably didn't work in this condition.
Yeah, I could see, I mean, with a nine-foot ceiling, that's really tall for a garage. I certainly think there's room to come out of that, and I think that they would probably, well, that and lowering, increasing the pitch of the roof would also, but here, the, and the applicant's discussion with me was that they were matching the roof pitch, which is understandable. They didn't want to increase the pitch just to bring the eaves down.
Right.
Because then it wouldn't match.
I'm just curious that, in doing this, if you keep the top, you know, you're pinching a second story of a garage to make it unusable, and if the direction is to go to one story, maybe they'll, you know, that's for them to figure out. I just was curious how, how one seems, bringing the eve height down seems to make it go, want to make it go up to have a usable second floor, and I just wanted to, that's up to them to figure out, but I wanted to make sure we were giving them the direction that was something that fit within the guidelines, and that's their duty. Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Sean?
Following, on what Bennett's saying, should there be a condition that the overall height of the garage be no taller than the house? I mean, I'd say where you've lowered the eve, I mean, I think, Ben, you know, what he's saying is you could have a huge, you know, a big angle there and still get what they may want. I think, I think it'd be nice if we restricted the height of it, if you felt, if that's something you're concerned about.
I agree. Yeah, it's from floor to peak, the two structures, the garage is one foot six or one foot nine taller than that same proportion on the house, and at the very least, that should come down to match the house, not be taller. It'll still be actually taller or higher, because the grade is higher, but that's understandable.
Okay. Thanks, Sean. Open public hearing. Does anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Further discussion?
I'll move approval with the staff's recommendation that the selection of windows and doors be approved by staff, the eve and, the eve ridge and eve height of the garage is lowered to be subordinate to the house, and that the dormers are of a more compatible form.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the next one is 2002 Eastland Avenue, and 2002, 2002 and a half, Eastland Avenue.
Excuse me. You may recognize this address. We heard an application for new construction at this location last month, and that was not approved. The applicant has made some revisions and would like to have them reviewed by you today. Again, the property currently is a non-contributing structure. This structure here actually straddles a property line between two parcels, and those parcels are to be reestablished as separate parcels once the house is demolished. In the motion and discussion last month, the disapproval is based on finding that the size and scale of the two proposed new buildings contrasted with a historic context, and that because the narrow widths of the building and spacing between them in relation to the height of the buildings was not compatible with the historic context. And you just approved the minutes from the meeting, so I think, rather than me, read them, you have them there. In the revisions before, oh, there's a Sanborn map showing the lot when it, before it had a house that I assume was contributing that's long since gone. The revised drawings, the applicant has lowered the pitch of the roof from 12, 10 over 12 to, or from 12, 12 to 10, 12. This brings the total height of the buildings down by one foot. They've also, in your site plans, you'll see that they've established and clarified a three-foot side setback on either outside of the building. However, there were no other changes to the design. In reviewing the revised submittal, staff concluded that it did not sufficiently address the issues of scale and the relationship of height to width that what the commission discussed last month. Finding the application to be not compatible with the historic character of the surrounding area, staff recommends disapproval.
Any questions for Sean? The applicant is here and would like to speak. Come forward.
Yes.
State your name and address.
Do you have a rendering you can put up?
Yeah, actually, there's a street view, and then the next.
Hi. My name is John Root. I'm the architect for the project, and I guess I should start by telling you how we got to this design solution. I think that would help a lot of people. Obviously, we have a 60-foot wide lot that we subdivided into two legal lots, because it was originally two 30-foot lots. When we first sat down to look at this project, obviously with a five-foot setback for residential, I know this is mixed-use, but when you're doing residential, if you want windows on that side of the house, you have to consider the five-foot setback. If you go, you can go to three feet, but it's obviously asking the developer to fire-rate the walls if you go closer than five feet. So in essence, we had a 30-foot wide lot. If you took the five foot out, you had a 20-foot wide footprint. And originally, we sat down with staff to discuss a wider footprint of 22 feet. We were okay with doing a fire retardant wall on one side, and what we were trying to do, which we kind of come full circle, we were trying to work it out with the fire marshal and Metro codes, and we've had some definitive answers on some of our questions since then. So that's now why we have kind of shifted around the side a little bit. The first submittal you saw, it was our effort. I guess I should start by saying, you know, as I walk down any street in Nashville, historic district, or what have you, it's not only the height and the scale of the houses that kind of make the fabric of the street, it's the spacing in between those houses that we were really trying to be very sensitive to, knowing that the 60-foot wide lot was an abnormal lot for this street. And that's what our purpose of us trying to spread out the distance between our houses into the, I think we were trying to get a consistent 13-foot gap between each house, knowing that the, you know, that we have a wider gap on either side of us. But we've since come full circle in that fire marshal and codes have both said, no, you cannot build that close to the, to the property line without putting fire-rated walls up, and, you know, they're not going to allow windows within that zero-to-three-foot mark. So that's why we pushed it back to three feet, and we left the width alone, because we were trying to create a gap in between the two houses, again, trying to be sensitive to the rhythm of the street and the rhythm of what's there. So that's why we didn't affect the width. Knowing that the height is, was a concern, and, you know, I'll keep in mind that we're all looking at a two-dimensional elevation, that's why we, my staff went out this last month and took measurements of the adjoining neighbors, the adjacent neighbors, and we accurately modeled that in three dimensions for you to show you kind of what our sympathies for the scale were, knowing that the existing houses on either side of us were, I think it was 21-4 on the left and 23-something.
Excuse me, John. By the way, he, this is passed out, this is what he's referring to.
Knowing that those heights are there, keep in mind, those ridge points happen about 12 to 15 feet from the front corners of the houses. So in essence, what we were trying to do is move our main ridge beam back further away from the sidewalk to give that impression of the scale to blend in more with what's there. Our ridge beam is now at 28 feet from the, from the front corner of the house, and I was told that the one foot was somewhat of an insult, but it actually is a direct result and of us sharpening our pencil. We were, we went back, and the actual dimension that we had last week was 30-foot plus or minus, but it was 30-foot two, and we reduced it by 18 inches. And we, we were trying to find a happy compromise between sacrificing square footage and proportion, most importantly. There's another staff review for another project today that was criticizing, adjusting the proportions. We feel like any more than 10, 12 will adversely affect the proportions of the house to a point where it's going to look a little weird, a little off. And so, again, that was our purpose of the 3D renderings, to show you the actual proportions of the plan and how it fits in with the street. We've taken a lot of consideration to our adjacent neighbors, and I hope that comes through with the 3D rendering. We've got design inspiration across the street. There's a Victorian with a porch above the balcony above the front porch, that we were kind of pulling those little elements off, and that's what kind of drove some of the design ideas for us originally. Another change that we made to the plans that wasn't noted on staff's recommendation was that we have physically changed the, we took the transom out of the project on the first house on the right, and lowered that dormer down. And again, that perceived height is much less now. It's, I think the height of that fascia is, is 20 feet, I think, right now. So really, it's about, height is not the only determination of scale, and I really wanted to show this 3D to the board, to kind of show you exactly what we're talking about. And I feel like, you know, with the height, I think the height, in my opinion, is okay, it's appropriate, and I think the design concept, although 22-foot wide, I don't know that we can go wider, and if we do go wider, it will make the house on the left taller, which I think is the opposite direction of which I think the board's comments last month were, and so that's kind of why we didn't do that. But again, I think the gap between the houses is crucially important when you're trying to set up that fabric and rhythm coming down the street. And knowing that this is a kind of a unique situation in that it's a mixed-use district and a historic overlay, I think we were, we were told we cannot come to the 5 to 15 and do a commercial building, so we're trying to come up with a compromise that kind of is a win-win for the neighborhood and a win-win for everybody involved. You know, with that, I think, I'll say that, you know, our client has been in communication with the neighbors on either side of us, and there's no opposition from those neighbors. They actually really appreciate the fact that we've gone to great lengths to try to reduce the scale into two separate houses and bring the scale of the roofs down. I think the satellite image was a great representation of the roof line on that street with the ridge, you know, growing away from the street. Can I go back a little bit? Yeah, every single one of those houses have somewhat the same roof line, where it's a ridge, center ridge beam going into the narrow part, and the roof sloping to the back, the front and back of the property. So that was kind of a design element that we tried to keep in this design.
So what are the structures on, John mentioned there's a two-story structure on the, across the street, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a Victorian immediately across the street and one parcel to the west, east, to the left. Yeah, I think it's that one, or maybe it's the, I see a little bit of the porch, it's the one to the left of that. So again, I think there's a Sears catalog design that has a balcony on top of a porch, and again, trying to be conservative of scale, we were trying to conceal some of that balcony with the porch roof, and that's kind of what drove our design with the porch roof. So in essence, we lowered it 18 inches from 30-foot two to 28.8, and what I've shown on this submittal is the actual grade. Again, we've taken great lengths to actually show you what the grade is doing, I think on one of the images, you'll see, we've got five to six feet to work with. Oh, it's too far, sorry. Do you have an image of the front? You started with that picture. Yeah, so we're trying to show the actual grade on the front of the houses, and trying to, again, be sympathetic to, you know, if we can get these down further, we will, because I have to make these ADA accessible to the sidewalk, so we're going to be trying to push these down even more. I just wanted to be considerate of that and show you, you know, this is kind of our worst-case scenario, in essence. All right? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sean. Before you leave, any more questions for John? Okay, thanks. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project, just please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Brett Withers. I live at 1113 Granada Avenue. I am, just as a minor correction, this is in the, this is actually in the Eastwood Neighbors, the Eastwood Conservation zoning overlay, and I'm the president of that neighborhood association. As the neighborhood president, would it please the commission to grant me slightly more than two minutes if needed? Part of my reason for doing that actually is that the, this is a border between two neighborhoods, and the other neighborhood president and I have met with the development team and the applicant, and we do have some constructive feedback potentially that we might like to offer, and it might take a little bit more than two minutes.
Really quick, and yeah, you are actually five minutes by the.
Okay. Thank you so much. I do want to talk, obviously, last month, I spoke before the commissioners, and not all of the same commissioners were present that time, but the objection that the neighborhood raised with these particular structures is, pertains to the proportionality of them. One of the things that I've heard Commissioner Mosley, among others, mention is that you can't take just one thing out of context. We're not just taking the height, we're looking at the height relative to the width of these structures compared to anything else in the neighborhood, and it does contrast significantly, we believe, because the buildings are narrower than any structure in the neighborhood, but they are also, they max out the height, but they don't even come close to it being as wide as the narrowest building in the neighborhood. So that, taken in total, we feel that that proportion does not actually meet the rhythm of the neighborhood. I'd also like to revisit something else that was spoken, was addressed by the commissioners last month, which was the rhythm of the street. I had reached out to Sean to ask for information on the Sanborn map. The original structure that was there was demolished in the 1998 tornado, and we were kind of curious to see what had been there previously. Sean obviously pulled up the Sanborn map, and it has shown that what was there originally was one single-story structure, very similar in size to the neighbors, and it does show that even though originally there were two lots that were 30 feet per the original plating of the district, that in fact, there never was proportionate rhythm between those structures. Not that that necessarily would lead you to rule one way or another on that, but it was something really interesting that we wanted to know, was it in fact one really large structure that was there that had gotten demolished? Sometimes we did have larger structures that straddled a line, or was it two structures what was there previously? So this shows that originally what was there, the original rhythm of that street, was actually one structure that was a single story, probably at the smaller end, we would imagine, of the context had the original structure still been there. So just wanted to bring that up again. Mr. Root has, again, has spoken about the proportionate, being proportionate to the neighbors as well as proportionate to the structure itself. The commission ended up agreeing with the neighborhood concerns last time that the structures were not proportional to themselves in terms of the height-width ratio, which there isn't a formula for that per se, but the commissioners agreed with our perspective that the narrowness of the structures combined with the height was at a proportion with anything that exists in our neighborhoods. And we, Elizabeth Smith, who's the president of the Lockland Springs Neighborhood Association, and I met with Jamie Reddy, and talked about some of that, and at that time, Jamie thought that, you know, there might be some things that the architect and the team could do to reduce that height and the massing, potentially widen the width and do some other things, and the revision that's come back is simply to drop it by one foot. And the reaction that we have heard from neighbors, and Bob Borzek is also here from the Lockland Springs Neighborhood Association, but the reaction that we've heard from our neighbors is that we feel that that's kind of insulting to the neighborhood concerns that were expressed, which the commission agreed, and that means that that is a little bit insulting to this board, we feel. I would also like to speak to the fact of the discussion about the balcony across the street. I unfortunately did not get a chance to print out a photo of that building, and I don't know if Sean, if you happen to have one. know if Sean, if you happen to have one. But if it pleases, I mean, I do have a picture of it on my iPhone if y'all would like to take a look at it, if that is acceptable to do that. But basically, what you're looking at across the street is, it's not actually a two-story house, it's a one and a half story house. It has a, on the upper story is a gable, it sits in about a third of the way from the width of the house.
You can pass it around.
Okay. Email it to Sean, but it'll be for the record. But what you see on that building is that there is a front dormer, but the dormer sits in from the sides. It does have a full-width porch and actually, that's one of the things that the Lockland Springs president and I mentioned, is that potentially actually widening that balcony to be the full width of the upstairs instead of having the porch might help to make the building up here a little bit wider. And, but bringing that dormer width in, setting it in would help to make that more closely mirror the neighboring, the properties across the street. But that's it for my time, so thank you for those comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there others from the public that would like to speak? And don't forget your telephone.
I don't think there is.
Okay. Just state your name and address, please, thanks.
Bob Borzak, Lockland Springs Neighborhood Association, past president LSNA, and a few other things. Pantheon's know, the developer of this property's no stranger to pushing the limits of the guidelines and they're doing likewise here. They did it before at 1419 Holly Street and they got away with it with some compromises similar to what they're attempting to do here, knock it down a foot and everybody's going to be happy. Well, obviously, from what Brett says, we're not. And if you look at the way it masses behind the facade of those two structures, they're massive compared to what else is there. And there's no disguise in that. You can disguise it on these two-dimensional drawings, but it's, they simply overdo. They're not within the limits, as far as I'm concerned, in the guidelines. One of the proposals that I know had been mentioned in reading the minutes from the last meeting was why hasn't they, why haven't they looked at the possibility of a single unit like they used to have and go back to the more traditional, consistent with historic duplexes, is a combined duplex of one structure and try and make that work. I think it would fit in much better than what they're doing right now, but apparently they're not interested, at least at this point, to do that. But I think that is something that can and should be explored before approving this. I would love for them to be able to do something that's more compatible with the neighborhood, but I don't think these are. And so, how much time I got left? Anyhow, we've got two good examples that are on the junket today, which is 322 South 16th and 1801 Woodlands.
That's two minutes.
And they are, excuse, they are perfect examples of what can be done with a one and a half story house and fit within a neighborhood and they were able to do that in spite of the fact that they could have done otherwise.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else?
You did receive some written correspondence and that was emailed to you, I believe, by Robin earlier, just wanted to remind you.
Okay, thanks. Do you have a rebuttal? You have two-minute rebuttal.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to respond to a couple of the comments I jotted down here. Excuse me. We're submitting a proposal today for two houses, two lots, not one lot. I don't think the discussion about a large four-square house is relevant to our discussion here today. You know, when we first tackled this design, we were, we had two lots. And so we explored options that we felt were appropriate for the neighborhood, two separate houses that would fit in. Again, we were emphasizing the rhythm and the setbacks and trying to come up with a one and a half story design that fit into the existing fabric that's there. I know it's not relevant, but the duplex policies that just went enacted for the Metro Nashville call out a one-to-one and a half ratio for narrow lot designs. We're 22 foot wide, a one and a half would be, what, 33 feet tall? We're under that ratio, if that means anything at all. Again, the perceived height is not 30, 30, 29, 28 feet eight, I guess is what I noted on the plans. It's, to me, the perceived ratio is what, where that fascia is on the front of the house. And again, it's 20 feet on one and of course, it's got a gable on the other, so it's 27 feet on the other. So I don't know that the client, you know, previous reputation has any bearing on this case. I don't know why that's even brought up. The shared wall design is not something that's desirable for a buyer and that was part of the decision-making process that the client had with the two separate lots. Again, we're dealing with a little, little unique situation in that this is a mixed-use street that got an overlay on it and we're trying to fit in. And part of that response is, I think, I hope that you see with the 3D renderings that I provided you today, that we've taken a lot of sensibilities and tried to enact them in our design.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, closed public hearing. Or anybody else have any questions for the applicant before? Okay, all right, discussion?
I guess the analysis I'm starting with is, if you look at the information we had last month, the project hasn't changed in any meaningful way. And we had a healthy debate and a lot of discussion and there was, I don't know whether that discussion necessarily equates with guidance, but if it does, that wasn't the direction that they went. And that's fine, so we're back here. To me, the question is, is this three-dimensional new evidence that shows us something different and changes the opinion? Because otherwise, if you're looking at heights, widths, ratios, it's the same thing we saw last month and it was a unanimous disapproval. So to me, it's focusing on these three-dimensionals. But I'd like to hear what other people think.
I don't know if, I don't remember unanimously disapproving it, but maybe I didn't speak up loud enough.
In the end.
Okay, all right. My feelings hadn't changed from our previous discussion, which is, and I think the applicant has come to us and we're to consider the design that's here. My fear is that if these two things were pushed together, we would have another discussion about it's too massive and it's too tall and, you know, for a mixed-use building to get a commercial use, which is, you know, is granted by right in the underlying zoning, I don't know what that would look like in the context, both of residential and then multifamily residential diagonally across and a little bit further down the street and with straight commercial diagonally across the street. My opinion of this project has not changed in that I think it is, it could have been done 100 different ways, but I certainly feel like evidence is there that the applicant has, as sensitively as they could, tried to put a mixed-use and albeit, to me, these look like residential structures within the context of the neighborhood. And given that the lots are narrower, again, this wasn't, to my understanding of the case presented, it was not subdivided after the fact that the lots are narrow and they exist. This, to me, is, you know, maintains many of the things, height to width. I feel like the rhythm, whether the distance between the homes is identical or not, I think, to me, the rhythm of houses in this proposal as opposed to a single house, whether it be the one that was demolished that was originally there, the one that was there before, this is more in keeping with a rhythm on a street in terms of mass to open space. And I guess certainly there are those who would disagree with that, but I feel like this project does that and maintains that.
Mr. Chairman, I think before I offer my comments, I need to ask legal counsel, since I was not here for the August meeting and did not hear this case initially and did not look at what was proposed before, I am looking at what's here, what they have here today, but am I disqualified from hearing this particular new drawing?
You are not. In fact, the discussion of the board really needs to center around what is before you today rather than what was here before. I understand that a lot of the commissioners may have actually been privy to that, so you can actually make a comparison based on what you know you saw before and what you're seeing today. But everything should be really centered around what is before you today. He's made a change, albeit whether you determine that it is a significant change or an insignificant change is a decision for the board to make, but because he has made a change and he is here under a brand-new, essentially what's a brand-new case, then you can participate in the case and any other commissioner that may not have been here as well can also participate in the case today. So I think that's a very good question, I appreciate you asking.
From my standpoint, I think it's good, you have a fresh take on it, you haven't seen it, so.
Well, that's what I was thinking, is that we've got two new, we've got a new proposal here before us today and that I probably was qualified to go ahead and look at that. So having gotten by that, my view is that, that the new structures being proposed just don't comport with the historic concept of this historic overlay, the Eastland Neighborhood Conservation Overlay. I just don't think they look historic, that's just my bottom-line view. So I don't think they're a good design for this particular area. And that's my opinion, just looking at it today, what's being proposed.
Anyone else? What does others may feel about the rhythm? I don't know if, some of the things we talked about last time...
My substantive comment is, I still think they're a little too tall. And, I mean, I like the top of the first gable there, what's that, 27 foot nine inches? Kind of feels a little bit better. I'm not, I think I agree with Ben's comment on the rhythm. I just feel still a little bit tall, that'd be my comment.
To me, it's funny, because I'm, I have a concern, but it's the different and almost an opposite take. It's not the height that bothers me, it's the fact that they're 22 feet wide and it's, that's not just that we're talking about historic overlay, but there's been angst and hand-wringing and a whole new ordinance to try to address what people call the two-plop that has been going around all over town. And to me, this is, this isn't exactly that, but it's closer to that than it is to the historic context and that's what makes me pause.
Aaron, in terms of, in speaking to that, which I think that's, the 30-foot wide lots, I think that probably was attractive to the buyer and is a given in terms of how it's platted. The ability to put any structure on there is delimited by setbacks and this project has matched the front setback and has more than the minimum side setbacks, given the base zoning. Certainly, the minimum side setbacks wouldn't necessarily make it meet the historic Conservation Overlay guidelines, but I think we've, this body has heard cases and oftentimes will allow for design solutions that are specific to constraints and/or hardships, whatever, you know, whatever you, however you may look at that, given the things that can't be changed about it. And I don't know that this necessarily is a hardship, but if we're going to deny this applicant, this application, given some specific, something a little more, well, we'll just say this, if it becomes a height-to-width ratio, then I think the discussion is then about height, because 30 feet is given. He does have other options of pushing two together, but I'm not sure that pushing the two together is the right decision for this, for this lot and that that would necessarily help the rhythm of the street. There may be a design out there that would. I don't know that pushing the applicant, and that may not be what you're suggesting, but pushing the applicant in that direction, I feel like as a board, we have to accept that there are two 30-foot lots here that require some setbacks and then give feedback in, I think in that case, height to width is part of what any result is going to be on these, on these lots. Now, you know, a one-story design would look different than this, admittedly. I think there's a mix of one and one and a half story that's been, that's been discussed as part of the deliberations, both of those for and against the applicant and the staff. So I would, that our debate can center around that and give some guidance to the applicant is something I think we ought to center our discussion around.
Yeah, I agree. The 30-foot lots are what they are. They need to work with it. The fact that they created that themselves, that condition is irrelevant, it is what it is, it's planted that way. But given you've got those, maybe a 30-foot lot isn't supposed to be a story and a half. Maybe because of width-to-height ratios, if you make that decision to cut them that, to cut such narrow lots, maybe your height just naturally has to come down and that's what you're stuck with. So I don't know that by tinkering with what they've started here is our job, maybe where they started just isn't something that we can give guidance on how to fix. Maybe they need to start over.
May I respond to Commissioner Fletcher's question?
One question, make sure, anybody else want to say anything? Okay, yeah, I'll open it back up for you real quick.
I was just going to say, if there's a height that's agreeable to the board, so be it, we'll come, I'll be more than happy to, if 27.6 is that magic number and we can get some compromise somewhere, we would be agreeable to that.
Thank you.
Clarification for staff, is the multifamily and, or what appears to be multifamily, I'm looking at page two of the application, or the staff report, is the multifamily that is diagonally across the street from where the Scott Avenue tees into this? It looks like there's a horizontal property regime there. Is that in the district? Certainly, it's not historic and I don't recall reviewing those projects, but I'm just curious if that's...
Yes, yes, it looks like...
Yeah, that's in the overlay, the same overlay.
Very good. And then, half a block away, I guess, across Alley 751, is that a historic, it may not be present in these pictures, I'm just kind of looking at the context of, there's an SP on that piece of property and then there's something across, I believe, top of the page is north, there's an MUL zone on Eastland that is half a block from the corner commercial piece there. What is the context, I guess, across the street and on Eastland Avenue that this project...
So in this aerial view, we're looking from the north, looking south across the property down towards Shelby Park. So sort of flipped around from the one that you were talking about, the multifamily, the townhomes are in the lower, right there. And then there's a Bongo Java, I think, Portland brew, right there at the corner. A little bit further to the right, on the same side of the street as the property is Jenny's Ice Cream and Silly Goose, a bunch of those restaurants.
All in the district? Not in the district?
Those are not. But the expansion of this overlay, thank you, it does continue on the block across the street on the bottom of this image, but then the corner wraps, the street wraps around the corner to Porter and sort of picks back up there, going up residential character mostly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any thoughts with height going lower? I mean, obviously, the proportions would change. Any discussion on that?
Again, I think I could get fairly comfortable if the height got reduced. A 27.6 starts to sound and feel, I think, good. I still think, I mean, I think now it's just too tall and too narrow. I think if it dropped a bit, it would be significantly better. I just don't know if our job is to peg a number. I mean, I just, I don't know what it really looks like. I'm just kind of reluctant about doing that.
I generally don't like doing that, because I think when you peg a number, then you've taken, you've sort of handcuffed the mind, certain design things that matter more than the actual...
I agree.
Yes, I would think that it's up to the applicant to come in here with something that imports with our rules. I'm hesitant to give numbers and feedback to that extent.
But we would if we were approving, you know, if we decide to make a nomination motion, we'd have to give the staff some direction. But anyway, just to clarify that.
I've got a question for the applicant that specifically relates to height, if it pleases the commission. I'd like to ask him.
Yeah, whatever we can to move it forward.
In the analysis, this information that was handed around, there's some heights that are given, is that measured from...
From grade.
That's measured from grade. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Well, see, no more discussion? Is there a motion? Or do, you have one, Aaron?
I'd add it. I make a motion to disapprove based on the fact the size and scale of the buildings contrast with the historic context. They don't meet Section 2B 1B, because the widths are too narrow and the spacing and building doesn't quite meet the established rhythm.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay?
My reluctance to that, Aaron, is that you specified it being too narrow in the rhythm. I mean, I'm just, I am on board to disapprove it, but I think my grounds are a little bit different than being too narrow in maybe the rhythm.
Can I clarify? Sure. We've got the second.
Drop the second.
Well, all right, you want me to do that?
No, you have to.
Propose an amendment.
Yeah.
What were you...
You're still in discussion, so it's okay for you to continue to discuss until you get ready to, unless you want them to make a change.
I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay, well...
So you'll do the amendment, and then we'll vote on the amendment, I guess, is what we do.
Yeah. Amending the motion to clarify that it is not just necessarily narrow width, that the size and scale, that causes the size and scale to contrast, but the width-to-height ratio and the height of the buildings, the two buildings relative to the immediate context.
Okay, a motion to approve the amendment, right?
Well, is that acceptable to the commissioner that made the second?
Are you okay with that? So we don't have to vote? Okay, good.
Yes, okay.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Did you vote?
I did.
Okay. You know, do you mind just raising your hands just to make sure? I'm sorry. Aaron, Richard, Rose. And, okay, motion carries. Okay, the next one is 1706, 1708, Fourth, nope, is that right? Yeah, 1706, 1708, Fourth Avenue North.
Yes. Excuse me, so sorry. This project is a project that you reviewed and disapproved last month. Your Rules of Order and Procedure document states that you will only rehear a case if there is some evidence that has become available that was not and could not have been available at the time of the meeting. The applicant submitted their request in writing, as required, which was emailed to you, and a copy was provided at your desk as well, just in case. Please note that the staff recommendation included in your packet was a review of a revised version of last month's application. Since that time, the applicant has requested that the original submission be reheard and that the proposal in your packets be withdrawn. The request provides two arguments for rehearing. One is that the existing buildings have been demolished. However, this is not new information and had no bearing on the commission's discussion about new construction last month, as the buildings are non-contributing. In addition, the staff recommendation from last month analyzed the then-existing buildings, determining them to be non-contributing. As such, the staff has the authority to permit demolition and did so after the meeting. The second reason given is that the applicant did not receive notice of the meeting. However, notice is not relevant, is not relating, is not evidence, excuse me, relating to the case, it's a procedural issue. Nevertheless, the applicant received a copy of the staff recommendation on August 8th with the date of the meeting. Also, on August 8th, the applicant received an automatic email from the city's permitting system notifying the applicant that the project was scheduled for the next meeting. Information about the meeting, including a full-year schedule, location, parking directions, and time, are provided in multiple locations, the agenda, MHC's website, MHC's handbook. This request for rehearing shall be acted upon by a motion of a member of the board who voted in the majority as to the disposition of the case. The vote was unanimous, so present were Chairman Tibbs, Commissioner Kailberg, Commissioners Gee, Champion, Fletcher, and Mosley. There need to be at least four affirmative votes to grant a rehearing. If the rehearing is granted, the applicant will be able to present this case next month. Again, to clarify, the case that was included on the agenda for this month was with a change to the original submission, so the applicant is asking for that to be withdrawn. If the rehearing is not granted, the applicant can return next month with a revised case. To recap, the commission needs to decide if demolition of the nonhistoric building and the procedural issue of notice is new evidence. Second, whether or not that information could have been presented at the prior meeting. If the board finds that both criteria are met, then the rehearing should be granted, and that motion should come from Commissioners Kailberg, Gee, Champion, Fletcher, or Mosley. If both of those two criteria are not met, the rehearing should not be granted.
Okay, and if we vote not to hear it, then in either case, we don't hear from the applicant, right? I mean, unless we choose to hear.
Unless you choose to rehear.
Okay. Are the commissioners clear before Robin sits down?
Can you walk us through the public notice procedures and what was done in this case versus other cases?
It's the same every month. Agendas are sent out, they're posted on our building, at our building, on the website. It's the same notification we always do.
Everyone that was here today, how did they receive notice?
They, typically, they receive a copy of the staff recommendation ahead of time, via email.
So was that done with this applicant?
Yes.
Is he claiming he didn't get the email, or do you know?
I don't know.
May I ask something from the point of clarification?
Please do.
Back to legal counsel.
Yes, ma'am.
Am I, I think she was not here either, so for both of us, we are not part of this discussion. Is that correct?
Well, you can't make the motion. You could vote if there is a motion made and seconded by someone who was here. But you, somebody in the majority, who voted in the majority would have to make the motion first.
Okay, the majority being those people to my left.
Right, that's correct.
Everybody to my left.
Right. So whatever the decision was last year, last week, last month, it all starts to run together for a while. At last month, whoever voted to disapprove, since that was the decision, anyone who voted to disapprove that is here today can make the motion to rehear today if they so choose.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understood it.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a question.
Sorry.
Let me ask a question. Sure. Has there been a situation of this nature in your history?
We were trying to think of that earlier today, and I think there was one request, but I honestly don't remember the details about that.
I don't think I was asking about the details, just to say yes.
Yes, there was one.
Okay, thank you.
One other time the request was made.
All right.
Susan, suppose that neither one of the conditions for rehear, suppose we decide that neither one of those conditions for rehearing is present, and we don't hear it, and then we find out that there is some procedural aspect that was missed, whether the notice needed to be delivered a certain way, or maybe needed to go by mail. What is the consequence of that? I guess my fear is that we unanimously disapprove something based entirely on the substance, and I don't want a procedural error to...
Dissipate it.
To automatically somehow approve it, because, you know, the more than 30 days have passed, or going towards that rule.
If, the option to appeal to the decision of the board on a red-assert action is always available to the applicant. And obviously, I'm not going to advise anyone to file that. That would be between them and their independent legal counsel to make that determination as to whether the facts would support such an effort. But your rule that's before you today on rehearing does not contemplate a procedural ground specifically. It contemplates new evidence that could not have reasonably been presented to the board previously. So you have to meet those two prongs. Those are, it's got to be new evidence, and then it's got to be something that had not been and could not have reasonably been presented to the board. If those two prongs are met, then under your rules, you can grant rehearing. Now, I say that, and at the same time, say that the board has the discretion to interpret its own rules. And that is one of the rules, in fact, it is the last rule in your Rules of Procedure. So to the extent that you deviate from the way it is set out and the way that it's contemplated under the rules, you would have to support that with whatever grounds you think are necessary in order to support that decision. But you have to articulate the grounds. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think I understand.
Okay.
Something else?
Just, my opinion is that demolition has nothing to do with, had nothing to do with our analysis. It was a given, so the fact that it now has been physically demoed is totally irrelevant. And it seems like notice went out like it did for everybody else. And anybody who's building a cottage development, I think, knows when these meetings are and how to find out when their case is going to be heard. It's just, I don't, I don't get it.
So like Rose said, it's on one of these sides. If you want to craft that as a motion, or do Ben or Richard...
No, it's such an odd situation, I don't even know what the motion exactly is.
I think you'd make the motion that we were not going to hear it based on...
You would move to either grant or deny the rehearing request. If you grant the rehearing request, it would be set for another meeting, where the parties could be here, and everybody could put on their evidence as to how the board should rule on the case. If you deny it, that will not happen.
I move to deny the rehearing request.
Okay, do you have a second?
I have a question, Aaron. Does it make any sense to have just a dialogue with their attorney to understand where they're coming from on this notification issue? I mean, is that okay?
And do they have an opportunity to...
Under the way the rules are written, it does not contemplate that there would be a hearing on the issue of whether to grant the rehearing. However, again, these rules are those of the board, and they are subject to interpretation by the board, and they are subject to exception as deemed necessary and appropriate by the board, so long as the grounds for the exception are articulated in the motion to DBA from the rules.
So if we want to...
In short, yes, you can do that, but you have to tell why you're doing it.
Okay. And, excuse me, but you, women, but I just want to make sure, yeah, I don't, would that be more clarification? Is that, I mean, I could open it up for that if it's...
I'm fine with what's in front of me, but if someone wants to hear it, I'm more than happy to withdraw the motion.
I mean, I don't know, just out of respect, I would, if we could give the attorney two minutes or something like that, that would be fine, and just hear the clarification.
All right, we'll open to the applicant for, just to address the two facts of why you'd like to rehear it. Is that right?
Yes, you need it, you need, first...
Do you need a motion?
Just clarify, we need to make sure that, I thought I heard you say, I could withdraw my motion, but is that in fact what you're doing?
I have...
Withdrawn the motion. And, and two, if you're going to deviate from the rules, you need to do a motion.
Make a motion. Okay. Make a motion, and just to be, okay, make a motion, but I want to be specific that we're only listening to the evidence at this time. So somebody make a motion.
I make a motion to withdraw my prior motion and offer the applicant's attorney two minutes to explain one of the two conditions on which their application for rehearing is based.
Right, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We don't.
Oh, you, well, you can vote.
We're out of the loop here.
Well, I think we have a quorum. Okay, all right. After all that, okay.
... the applicant in this case. I want to address specifically the issue of notice. It's clear, as was commented by legal counsel, this commission interprets your own rules, so you have the ultimate decision here on this matter. My clients are emphatically stating to the commission, they did not receive the notice. I heard from staff that a copy of the staff report goes to the applicant, discusses not only the staff report, but also the date, time, place. I'm emphatically stating to you today, my client did not get that. My clients are respected builder developer in the community, have a huge stake in this piece of property, they absolutely would have been here, period. This is a matter where not only did the staff of this commission work with my client for 13 months on this project, the staff clearly unequivocally recommended approval, the planning commission recommended approval, the council lady has written a letter to you today urging you to allow the rehearing, and that the client was totally supportive of the overlay in this area, which she was very appreciative of. So basically, going to the guts of the issue is actual notice. You can call it procedural, but if my client's not here, they don't have a chance to make the representation. All we're saying is rather than start from scratch, we're asking that we be allowed to be reheard at the October 15th meeting. We pledged you to work with the staff, so hopefully you come back again with a design that not only they approved the first time, but with the slight changes will be approved by them again and the commission. That's our two minutes. There was absolutely no notice, there's nobody that disputes that was done here. We're not here because we enjoy coming down two or three times, we didn't get the notice. We think that's critical. Thank you.
Susan, is there anything?
Thank you.
I guess I'm confused again. What Tom just described is wanting an opportunity to come back and present what would be a different design. I mean, they can do that next month, right?
Nothing prevents them from filing a new application and with a different design.
Okay.
I think they want to do, is it a new design or the old design?
It's the old design, the original, right?
The rehearing request, as I understand it, and Robin, please clarify, the rehearing request, as I understand it, is for the exact same application that was denied. That's what the rehearing is for. Now, regardless as to where the board comes out on the rehearing of that prior case, any applicant that is denied by this board can revise and come back with a new application. That's actually what just happened in the case prior. So nothing would prevent that from occurring.
So I am confused. So why is that not being re-submitted as a new application?
They requested a rehearing of the old case.
Okay, in light of the information, is there a...
With all that considered, I make a new motion to disapprove the request for rehearing.
Okay, we have a motion. Second? Okay, any discussion?
I just, I just really can't remember the last time someone said they never got a, I'm not...
To me, that's mad, if they're coming back with a new design, they can just come back with a new design. I don't understand this procedural, the loss on it. It just doesn't seem...
Do they want, are they wanting this design to see if we'll approve it this time or not?
Because we get debated for something like that.
Yes.
That's...
They're wanting us to... They're wanting us to revote on the previous...
That is what you want, yeah. I'm just going to go for it. Yeah, that's what you want, right. They want to rehear exactly what they presented last time. That's their goal. And your motion was to not hear it next month, Aaron.
His motion is to not hear it again today.
It's not to hear the exact application that we heard last month, again, next month. They are entirely free to tweak the design even a tad and resubmit it, and we'll listen to it again.
And Ben, you second that?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I mean, I'm sympathetic to the client or the applicant, but I agree. I mean, at the end of the day, you could just add two steps. I mean, it could just be a marginal change, right? A roof color. I mean, it doesn't have to be a total redesign, does it?
No, no. For instance, as Ms. Jones pointed out, the case you just heard, it was...the height changed a little bit, and that was all that they changed.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and everybody can vote.
Clarification for staff and for council. The applicant has a new application, and that was on the agenda for today. Is rescinding that application and ask that we rehear last month's case, the possible ways forward are, A, to rehear last month's case, if we agree to do that, B, to not rehear last month's case. Is there an option to B, where if we deny the rehearing, that we'll hear this month's case? This month's application, excuse me.
The applicant has requested it to be withdrawn.
Yeah. What they would have...they've turned in a letter saying that they have withdrawn that application. They would almost have to rescind that withdrawal. Procedurally, for the board and in terms of notice, it's on the agenda. So there's nothing that would prohibit the board from hearing it if they wanted to move forward. But again, it's their application, and they have withdrawn it. So unless they rescind their request to withdraw the application, then the board can't hear it.
And would it be within our...notice has been given, the work's been done, we're all here. Would it be within our right, despite what's before us at this moment, and there's a motion and a second, to allow the applicant to present a case on what they have today?
Yeah, they could do that if they wanted to rescind. I mean, there's nothing legally that would prevent them from doing that, assuming that they rescinded their withdrawal.
And I don't even begin to know how the procedural will do that, but why don't we get this out the way if we're going to re-listen to it or not, and then we'll take the next step after that? Does that sound like we should do that? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I want to register an extension because, in my view, I believe if I can't participate in the discussion on this motion, I cannot participate in voting. So that's why I'm abstaining.
And I second that as well.
Okay.
Then we need four concurring votes.
Okay. So I can vote then?
Yes.
All right. I'll vote yes. Okay. Motion carries. So we are denying to look at the next month. So do I allow them the opportunity to rescind it?
Mr. Chair, if it pleases the commission, might I offer the applicant the ability to choose to reinstate their application for this month?
Sure, if that's the legal time to do that?
Yes.
Would you like to rescind and listen to this month?
Mr. Chairman, we would. In light of the ruling not to allow the rehearing of what was done on August 20, we'd like to ask you put us at the heel of the agenda today so we can talk about this and do the presentation here with what we had originally requested to be withdrawn.
Okay. And I really expect...thank you for allowing to move to the end so that we can do the others. Thank you. Okay. 1401 Third Avenue North, and 1403 Third Avenue North, 1408 Fourth Avenue North, 1404 Fourth Avenue North, 302 Taylor Street.
This is an application for a multi-unit residential development in the Germantown Historic Overlay. The bulk of the development will be situated along Third Avenue North between Taylor and Van Buren Streets, which is outside of the Germantown National Register District, which means that in the design guidelines, it's governed under the section for areas where there is little historic context or outside of the historic context. Part of the development is within the National Register Historic District for Germantown. It's about 100-foot wide lot along Fourth Avenue North, and that part of the development is governed by a different section of the design guidelines for areas within the historic context. The project does involve demolishing two structures on the Third Avenue North portion of the property. Those structures were built about 1988 and are non-contributing, and staff believes it's okay to demolish them. Here's the site plan. Building A is the primary building facing Third Avenue North, and Building B is the other structure along the 100-foot section of Fourth Avenue North. A setback determination is requested for the rear of Building A along the alley. The SP zoning that governs the site, and I'm sorry, I should have said that earlier, but the site is actually governed under an SP zoning or specific plan zoning that was passed, I believe, in the spring. You should have a copy of that in your design guidelines, or I'm sorry, in your staff recommendation. The SP permits up to 249 multifamily dwelling units. So the SP zoning for the site requires a three-foot setback along the alley. Most of the rear of the structure will meet that setback. However, there's a trash area that's approximately 24 feet wide, and that will be just 2 feet 3 inches from the alley. And there's another amenity space that is about 21 feet wide, and it'll be about 1 foot 4 inches from the rear property line. In addition, the project involves a bridge at the third-story level connecting Building A and Building B going over the alley, and it's likely that that bridge will also need a setback reduction. Staff finds a reduced setback at the alley to be appropriate in this instance because the majority of the structure does meet the prescribed setbacks, and the areas of reduced setbacks are located in the middle of the block away from Taylor and Van Buren Streets, where they will pretty much only be minimally visible from kind of the public thoroughfare. Here's the Third Avenue North facade and the alley facade. The primary entrance for the development will be at the corner of Taylor Street and Third Avenue North, which is on the left-hand side of the image above. This will engage both streets and be oriented towards the historic preservation overlay, or the kind of the more...it'll be oriented towards the end of the district where there's more historic context, whereas as you get closer to Van Buren, there's less historic context. Many of the ground floor units along Third Avenue North and Taylor and Van Buren Streets will have stoops leading to the street. So the units will have stoops, and that kind of helps to enliven the streetscape, which is something that is called out in the design guidelines. Building A will range from four to five stories in height. It is designed so that its tallest portion is towards the end of Third Avenue North, towards Van Buren Street, and it steps down to four stories as the building approaches Taylor Street. And again, the Taylor Street end of the development faces a more residential portion of the district versus the Van Buren, which is more industrial and has less historic At the corner of Van Buren and Third Avenue North, the development is about 72 feet tall from the grade. At the corner of Taylor and Third Avenue, the structure is about 48 feet tall. That 48 feet lasts for about a depth of 25 feet along Third Avenue North, at which point it goes up to 64 feet tall. Here are the facades facing the two side streets, Van Buren and Taylor Streets. Again, the primary entrance for the development will be at the corner of Taylor and Third Avenue North. Along Taylor Street, the height is about 60 feet, although it does step down a little bit towards the alley. And on Van Buren Street, the height is approximately 64 feet tall. The massing along Van Buren is broken up with a courtyard about halfway between Third Avenue and the alley. The design guidelines state that the great densities and taller heights, the greater densities and taller heights may be appropriate along Third Avenue North. In addition, the North Nashville Community Plan allows for additional height in this area of Third Avenue North, stating that along Third Avenue, buildings could be a maximum of four to six stories and no taller than 75 feet, and this development does meet that. Because of the site's location outside of the historic context, and because it's on Third Avenue North, which is considered an arterial street, and because it's at the edge of the district, staff finds that the height of the Third Avenue portion of the development to be appropriate. Building A does contain a parking garage for more than 300 cars. You can see that in the alley facade. The garage structure will be located behind the residential portion of the structure. It will not face any streets, and pretty much only has the alley-facing facade. The garage will be accessed via a new curb cut along Third Avenue North, about halfway between Taylor and Van Buren Streets. The curb cut will be approximately 24 feet wide. Access to the garage will also be provided from the alley, so you can come in off of Third Avenue North or from the alley. Although new curb cuts are often discouraged, staff finds that this one is appropriate because it provides vehicular access to the garage, it minimizes interruption to the sidewalk network, which is something that's called out in the design guidelines, and provides a cross connection, so you can kind of pull in from one area and exit out the alley, which will help with both traffic and with interruption to the streetscape. And again, this is outside of the primary historic context of Germantown. And moving along to the Fourth Avenue portion or Building B, this again is located within the Germantown National Register District, so within the historic context. This section of Fourth Avenue North, I have some photos at the end, has a mixture of historic and newer residential development that's about one to two stories in height. Building B is scaled to fit the residential neighborhood character of Fourth Avenue North. At the front, the front is two stories in height, and it's divided into two 31-feet-wide sections, which is separated by a 13-foot-wide recessed entry or courtyard. This type of U-shaped development and configuration is common for historic apartment buildings, so staff found it to be appropriate. The central entry is setback approximately 20 feet from the front portion of the facade. And you can see at the bottom kind of the comparison of the new development to what's around it. To the left of the development is, those two structures are non-contributing, but the two structures to the right of it are contributing. Here are the side facades for the Fourth Avenue North structure. At the front, the structure will be two stories and approximately 28 feet tall above the foundation because there's kind of a, I guess, not a hill, but a grade difference where it's about 33 feet from the sidewalk level. Approximately 15 feet back from the front wall of the structure, the building expands to three stories and approximately 42 feet in height. Building B will be setback approximately 10 feet from the front property line, which is about 15 feet forward of the historic house next door at 1406 Fourth Avenue North, but is only about 1 to 2 feet forward of the infill houses at 1402 and 1404 Fourth Avenue North. The front portions of Building B will have two-story front porches and doors leading to those porches along Fourth Avenue North, and this mimics the residential orientation of the historic neighborhood. The porches, and the designer may be able to clarify this, but they seem to only be five feet deep on the drawings, and staff asked that they be at least six feet deep. And again, here are some site photos. The top two photos are the structures along Third Avenue North that are to be demolished. The bottom two structures are kind of pictures of the site closer to Taylor Street, where there's really not any buildings or much going on in the site. And then the top photo here is the site, the vacant lot along Fourth Avenue North, and then a streetscape view of Fourth Avenue North. And you can see across the street is a new development that the commission approved, I think in like 2010 or so, of several detached two-story structures. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with several conditions. Staff approve all final materials. The HVAC and other utilities be located on the roof of the structures or on the rear facade along the alley. Staff approve the design and materials of all pertinences. The porches on the front facade of Building B be at least six feet deep. Building B's parapet be enlarged to serve as a railing for the terrace behind it. I believe the applicant is here to kind of address that. I think that we've worked it out where raising the parapet maybe isn't the best idea, but she's going to talk about that a little bit more. The foundation height and finished floor heights of Building B be compatible with those of the historic structure at 1406 Fourth Avenue North. And finally, staff approve the final dimensions, materials, and design of the bridge connecting the two buildings. With these conditions, staff finds that the project meets the Germantown Design Guidelines. Happy to answer any questions, and I believe the designer is here to answer further questions and address the commission.
Hi, Melissa. I'm sure I missed it. So it's zoned SP?
Yes. So there's a specific plan that governs the site. And I believe the SP states that, you know, it's not finally, that the commission has the final approval of the design and configuration.
So during the...and then SP, there are suggestions on heights and stuff like that, what you mentioned, that so you can, there's a greater height permitted on Third versus Fourth. Is that in the regs, or is that in the SP zone?
I'm not sure if that's...because the SP is in your packet. I don't believe that's actually called out in the SP. That is called out in our, the Germantown Historic Overlay Design Guidelines and in the Community Plan for North Nashville.
I guess my first response is Building B is going to have a huge impact to the neighbors, to the, I guess that's somewhat east. What's called out in the regs for that?
Let me just get a copy of it, sorry.
I can jump in with a little bit of information. You have the same authority you have here that you have for any project. In some ways, it's almost irrelevant what the SP says. You still have to follow the design guidelines for what's most appropriate here, if that helps.
And because Fourth Avenue North, that section, that building, Building B, is within the historic overlay, or within the National Register District where there is historic context, you know, the design guidelines, similar to other design guidelines, talk about, you know, being compatible within the neighborhood. And I don't know, and I'd have to check to see if it specifies any specific heights, but, you know, the commission, as always, is tasked with making sure it's compatible with the district.
That's fascinating. I mean, particularly given the case we had earlier with the two narrow lots and the compatibility of the neighbors, and now we have 40 units going up against a neighbor?
It is a very, very different context. You know, as you all know, context is everything. Not only is it two very different neighborhoods, but the context is very different. And there is very little context on, you know, at least around half of this project.
Mr. Tibbs, I might have said this before the deliberations started, but I'd like to let the record reflect it, at both the applicant and the staff's request. I'd seen this project before, and had provided some input with staff in preparing this recommendation, but I don't think that that involvement will, you know, influence my, unduly influence my judgment here in reviewing the cases before us and what's presented before us today. But I would like to maybe add, in terms of context, and specifically with regard to the writing of the guidelines, that Germantown was conceived, the guidelines were conceived and in cooperation with stakeholders, large stakeholders within both existing businesses, but then at that time, stakeholders of land that were unimproved, but certainly were to be developed with higher density multifamily, or perceived higher densely mixed use in multifamily developments. And that this lot, I think, is indicative of what, as, you know, those who are drafting the guidelines kind of knew, that as these industrial sites, which were, some are an accumulation of lots, and some have just had industrial buildings built across multiple lots that have never been consolidated, when real estate transactions took place, that these would revert back to single-family was something that we were almost 100% certain wouldn't happen. And in terms of passing these guidelines, and that they are very different in terms of what they would permit, and given the proximity... in terms of what they would permit and, given the proximity of the neighborhood to downtown and the kind of future, I guess, environment, that there could be a coexistence between single-family shotgun one-stories and up to, you know, three to, in some cases, six-story developments. And I think that's reflective in the guidelines as to how they're written. So it does bridge quite a gap in terms of the infill one- and two-story single-family all the way up to these much more intense projects.
Question to staff. On Fourth Avenue, and again, specific to Building B and the MUN zoning, those properties that are 1, 2, 3, 4 to the right of those, are they historical? Are they contributing?
Yeah. Let me pull up the, I think this image does it best. So in the center, you'll see that the two, or the new residential development. The structures, I believe, to, the structure next door is historic, is the one on the other side. The two to the right are historic, and I believe the one on either, on that side is new construction. The ones to the left are not historic. So the one-story one to the left is like a 1960s apartment complex, and then the one on the corner, the last one, is an industrial structure. It's actually, the commission saw that, or maybe it was a staff-level approval, it's going to be a new restaurant.
I guess my intent of asking these questions is due to impact in the future where if they are contributing and they will not be demolished, then how these larger buildings impact these residences?
For clarity, I think there's a single contributing residence on the street directly adjacent to the South.
On Fourth Avenue?
Hmm?
Fourth or Third?
There are none on Third.
Fourth, sorry.
Fourth. Yeah, fourth. I think in this photo, the ones on the left, on the lower level, the ones on the left are all new construction. The one I think you see here in the right is also new construction. And then, I don't think I have a photo of the, unfortunately, of the house just next door, which is historic.
Richard, I really appreciated your observation about the case that we had earlier on, what was it? Can't think of the name of it.
Eastland.
Eastland, thank you. Where we had the effort to put two houses on the one-and-a-half lot there. And I appreciate that observation because it was absolutely going through my head as we, as you made this presentation here, Melissa. And, but I know both these areas. I just happen to love both these areas. I'm in them all the time, and I appreciated Robyn's statement that the context, the historic context is actually pretty different in both of these neighborhoods. And that helps me get over my feeling that, my opinion that in the earlier one, it just wasn't, it wasn't appropriate. The design of those two houses was not appropriate to the historic context because I don't think you have quite the mixed use that you got in this one. So, and I appreciate your comment about there only being one historic contributing house in this area. So that makes a big difference for me. I think it's a good design.
Thanks, Rose. Any more question to the applicant? I mean, to staff, Melissa? Sorry, I was just about to say the applicant. Any more staff? Okay, thanks, Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak regarding the project?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for your consideration of our project today. My name's Stuart Prophet, and I'm the Managing Principal of Prophetixxen Partners. We're a regional apartment development firm based in Charlotte, North Carolina, and we hope that this is our first of many projects over the long term that are an asset to their neighborhood, to their neighborhoods and the city of Nashville. I wanted to share a little bit about our neighborhood outreach in this process that we've been going through since around the beginning of the year. We have met multiple times with the adjoining property owners, including the McWaters that are the adjacent historical house that we mentioned, and others all around the perimeter of the property. We've also met with neighborhood leadership multiple times, and we've had two presentations at the monthly Germantown Neighborhood Meetings. One, most recently, as last Monday, just to share the further refinement of the architectural details. And the, everyone has been very supportive in the neighborhood. We, you know, the questions we get are parking, and as a result of that, we have parked 100% of our demand within our deck. We get questions about retail. Clearly, there's a concern in the neighborhood about parking load on the street, and so they are more cautious about retail. So we get questions about that. We're not having, we're not proposing any retail. And so we've had very good support. And as a result of those meetings and working with the neighborhood, we did get a letter of support from, for our project, from Robbie Vaughn, the president of the historic neighborhood in April, to, that letter was to Councilwoman Gilmore and the Planning Commission. And I have that letter that we can pass around. It sort of talks about their reasons for supporting the project, and it's, basically hits on us including them in the process, and I'll just pass it around. There's several copies there. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mona Hodge of Smith G Studios. She's architect on the project, and have her respond to some of the other architectural comments. Thank you very much for your consideration.
My name is Mona Hodge. I reside at 484 Flintlock Court in Antioch. As Stuart mentioned, I'm the project architect and project manager for the proposed new multifamily development. If there's no opposition, I'm going to keep it brief since staff is recommending approval. I'll just present our requirements, I'll present the three items we've specifically been working with staff the most on, one of which is the setback determination that we're requesting. As some of you may know, our alley, since we are proposing to develop the entire block on Third Avenue, we're dedicating two feet of right-of-way from our property to the alley to increase the alley width. For that reason, that three-foot setback would potentially have been five feet, which is in keeping with the original design guideline. The two areas that we're asking for a setback determination only encompass about 10% of the overall facade. Those are also inside of the parking structure, where we were limited, and, for example, the trash, we're limited by having an 18-foot-deep parking area and then wanting to keep that trash internal, non-visible to the surrounding streets. We needed more depth than the 18-foot-deep parking lot or space could allow, so we needed to push it into the setback a little bit. And also with that amenity space, that was in response to some conversations that we've had with neighbors to promote a livable alley, make it a safer space, more litted, have amenities that are facing the alley. Again, that was within an 18-foot-deep parking spot, and we needed to push it out about a foot or two, one foot eight, to be specific, to try and make that amenity space more livable and gathering. As it pertains to Building B along Fourth Avenue, we did try to adhere to Section 2.0, new construction with, in historic context. As Stuart mentioned, the one building being next door, we had a couple of meetings with them. And they are, specifically, we discussed having a three, a two- and three-story building overlooking your lot and privacy and those kind of things. They did not voice any concern. Their, their only requirement, if any, was that we helped them to establish an appropriate fence between the two properties. We've centered our building within the 100-foot lot, so we are approximately 12 to 15 feet from the property line. Additionally, the staff recommendation for Building B's porch along the front facade to be at least six feet, we have since verified that it's six feet, which also pushed our building away from the front of the street. So we're no longer projecting that foot or two in front of the infill buildings along the Taylor inside. We're pretty much in line with the new construction that's on that street. The next comment about Building B's parapet to enlarge and serve as a railing, our only issue with staff's recommendation is that building, that pushback area was serving as a kind of secondary porch area. So if, in trying to promote community and coming out on your French porch and, you know, enjoying the neighborhood, if we create a parapet instead of a railing, you'll be looking at the back of that parapet instead of being able to look out onto the neighborhood and kind of open your view up to the surrounding areas. We did have some preliminary meetings with staff on Building A, which is the larger building. We'll go over to that real quick. Looking at the two-deep facade, it's kind of difficult to understand the depth and proportion and mass and trying to really break up that facade. So we have brought along some 3D renderings. I also have some that pass around, so you guys can get a closer look at those. There's two each. So on that, that first one, you can see that we're not only changing the material at that three-story level to try and bring that architecture down to more of the pedestrian scale, but we're also bumping the building in and out about three to four feet porch steps along that facade to really step the building down and bring that pedestrian scale down, as well as introducing stoops and planters that provide more livability and experience for the walkable environment in Germantown, which we really want to work towards. As far as that, the corner of Taylor and Third, as Melissa already mentioned, there is a historic or contributing building, kind of catty corner to us. So in response to that, we've lowered our building to four stories on that, that corner. And again, as our building steps on Taylor towards the neighborhood, we responded again by, as you can see here, trying to step down our facade as it gets toward the alley. That kind of concludes a lot of the staff recommendations and conversations that we've had with them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak regarding this project, please come forward, state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, a closed public hearing, discussion.
Can I ask the architect a couple of questions?
No. Why do you? Just joking.
The trash I see is on the alley. Is that for the entire project? I guess that's the dumpster location?
Yes.
Okay, so B would be taking their trash there. That's where the dumpster pickup would be for B. What is the square at the rear of B, right-hand, what is that?
The square at the right.
That white?
That's the transformer. It's also in keeping with trying to keep the utilities away from the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, just in case, before she sits down? Okay, we'll try it again.
I'll get up as many times as I can.
Okay, all right. Duly noted. Okay. Any more discussion? Your motion?
Yeah, I don't know. Again, am I the only one who has somewhat of concern of B, or is that just given Germantown and development and infill, and that's just what, that's just reality, is just totally different context, and it's all fine?
I would say it's all fine, it's a pre-fall, but I think Germantown is a unique district.
I agree with that.
I wouldn't say it's all fine, Richard, but I think this one is.
Richard, I mean, in direct response to that, I think, you know, there's a, there's a single, these guidelines talk about the, in context, there's a single contributing structure in the same block as B, and there's one, the quantity of contributing structures is reduced, and there's pieces of guidelines that respond directly to that, and it kind of gets back, it doesn't kind of, it gets back to writing these guidelines, which, while we started with kind of the standard template of guidelines that most of the other districts are in, we had to make vast additions to that to deal with some of the specifics of these larger lot developments. You know, you don't want to say every project is unique, but certainly this one with the way the real estate transaction existed, you know, Building B is, I think what allows it to be what it is, is that they're parking all the cars across the alley. Without that, you know, you wouldn't have this building. Is that good? You know, I don't want to tell you it's good or bad, but that is the way that this one certainly has been presented to us, and that allows it to be as massive as it is. I think if you look at, what's not shown on the context is some infill that is within the district, I think was approved by SP many moons ago before the district was put in place, which is a three-story building, not, less than half a block away, a quarter of a block away. There's some three-story elements to that building. It's rather tall, and it's an intense use. Maybe not, certainly that's not as intense as this is, but this is kind of as what's going on in the neighborhood, ratcheting up the, ratcheting up the value, with the value of the property, ratcheting up, this is a response to that. And this building, not unlike, while the Worthing site and this site are not identical, this building is certainly similar to what you see there that has come up. And I think, you know, while everybody doesn't, is not in love with everything, that building is viewed as, you know, as a good addition to that site.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think what's maybe eaten at me a little bit, and I'm definitely not, you know, I think A, and all that is fabulous, it's just the orientation of the south side or southeast side of B being at that individual neighbor's property, and assumingly, the neighbor doesn't have a problem with it, but, I mean, they're going to wake up one day and there's 60 people, or 70 people now just looking down at their, at their house, and it's just, you know, some of the infill stuff we're seeing in Sylvan Park or whatever, you know, the stuff's kind of oriented on the inside. Obviously, this is a very narrow, significantly narrower, but, and I get the shotgun stuff, but it just seems kind of odd that, of all the things that we talk about and discuss, that, you know, that orientation looking out towards this property is, again, if everybody's okay with that, that's fine. I just wanted to kind of have a dialogue about it.
Yeah, I'm not trying to convince you otherwise that there shouldn't be, shouldn't be concern there. That is a very, in looking at this one initially, seeing the site plan and seeing this density on that lot, I think it... this density on that lot, I think it, it's, it's different, it certainly is, in terms of the pattern of development on that street, is, is an anomaly.
Any more discussion, or do we have a motion?
Yeah, that's, I'll, I'll pose a last question to the staff. It's, it's a step, Robin, again, with the orientation of the units in the southeast side of B, whatever, whatever we want to say, this is the site, orienting towards that individual property, that is, you guys were comfortable with that and you looked at that?
The building itself meets the orientation in terms of the, we felt like, in terms of the design guidelines, because the building itself is oriented to the street as it should be. Is this a massive building for this spot? You know, as Commissioner Mosley said, we think there's an argument in both directions, really. I mean, yes, obviously, it's much larger, much deeper than the house next door.
It's just, it's just kind of interesting. When we, every case we, we see, we're always respecting this historic compliant home. And here, it's just like, it doesn't really exist. It's just, and I understand this is totally contextual and we're in Germantown, I get all that. It's just, it's just so different than what we normally do and I'm all for development and this is a beautiful project. I mean, I'm not taking away from it, it's just, it's just kind of seems so different than what we normally do.
You're right.
Our, our dialogue is just totally unbelievable about it.
It is. And I, you're absolutely right. And I think that's partly because Germantown, and then there's some other districts like Salem Town as well, where you do have these large swatches of either no contributing structures or one or two. And so, it is a very different discussion than one you might have if we were talking about Belmont Hillsboro, Lockland Springs East End. It is a very different discussion.
One item for, this is for staff's discussion, there's, at the, in the packet, there's exterior design, door basis of design is a custom fiberglass panel exterior door and then a premium Atlantic vinyl, single hung window by gel windows. Those are both, those have both been approved by staff in the past.
I'm not sure about the gel win window. We'd have to look at our, at our, we have a list of windows that we've approved in the past and oftentimes, we look at windows, because windows are constantly changing and improving, hopefully. So, I think we would want to look at those before finally approving them.
And certainly, the recommendation states as much. I just, I know vinyl is.
Typically, we don't typically approve vinyl. We, there are a couple of windows that we've been looking at more recently where technology is getting better and, so we'd have to take a look at a sample of it to see.
Surely, thank you.
Okay, can we have a motion?
Move approval of, should I go through all the, all the addresses here?
I don't think we have.
Move approval with staff recommendation of items one through seven for the infill project there between Third and Fourth Avenues and bounded by Taylor Street.
Second.
Okay, have a motion second. Any discussion?
I would just like to say that I, I will, I will support this. And I'm, I appreciate the support from the president of the Germantown District, as well as the council person, because I think that's, that helped me a lot, just kind of overcome some of the observations I had about building B.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, is the next one 2511 Natchez or 322?
That was polled this morning.
Okay, it's polled, okay. So, 322 South 16th St., oh, we're having a dismay.
We're having a break.
I think we've.
Move for a two-minute recess.
I think we're having a break.
Five-minute recess.
There's popcorn in the hallway.
My commission, the best family. Okay, break for five minutes. Metro Historical Commission, zoning commission was going to return. First, before we start on 322 South 16th Street, applicant would like to come and make an announcement.
Tom White, I represent the applicant in this matter. Requesting our matter be deferred until the October 15 meeting of the commission. We've been trying to get prepared for this matter in this short break, but figured in fairness to my client in the presentation and the fact they've got six units, three of which are under contract, we would like to ask for the deferral until the October 15 meeting. We'll continue to work with the staff to see if at all possible, we can have a positive recommendation from them and hopefully by the commission at that date. So, at your indulgence, we'd like to have it deferred one meeting or until October 15.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, 322 South 16th Street.
322 South 16th Street is located at the northwest corner of South 16th and Boscoval Street. The two structures on the current lot are non-contributing. One structure is located at the southern end of the lot, close to the corner of South 16th Street and Boscoval Street. The other structure is located at the back of the lot, near the corner of the alley and South 16th Street. So, these two structures are both single-family homes on one lot, one's on Boscoval, one's in 16th and one's at the alley and 16th Street. In between the two structures is a pool and there's also a somewhat large drainage easement running across the property as well, which you'll see in the next slide. So, here is the proposed site plan. The applicant is proposing to demolish the two non-contributing, single-family structures and to construct two new, single-family structures on the lot. The, under current zoning, the site is zoned R6, which does allow two units, but current zoning states that they need to be fully attached, so a typical duplex that the commission sees. So, the applicant is applying to the Board of Zoning Appeals for permission to build two detached residential structures to replace the two detached residential structures currently on the site. Typically, MHCC waits for a determination from BZA before considering an application like this, but BZA is meeting tomorrow at four, I think at four, might be at two, but they're meeting tomorrow and staff felt that since the hearing is just tomorrow, that waiting another month, you know, wasn't necessary and also because we spoke to the staff of the BZA and the staff there felt that the project was likely to be approved by the BZA. Any recommendation for this project before the commission today should be conditional on the BZA's approval of the site plan and of the project. So, the proposal before the commission today is to construct two detached residential infill structures and two detached carports on the site. All four structures meet the base zoning setbacks. In addition, they're situated to avoid a drainage easement that runs across the property. One structure is oriented to face Boscoval Street and its front setback will match the front setback of the adjacent property on Boscoval Street. The other structure will be oriented to face South 16th Street and will be situated 10 feet from the front property line or the 16th Street front property line, which meets the base zoning setbacks. This type of corner lot configuration where there's a house at the front of the property facing the primary street and a separate house at the rear of the lot facing a side street can be found in Lockland Springs. It's not necessarily common, but it's found in a handful of locations in Lockland Springs. And in most times, in most instances in Lockland Springs, the property has been officially subdivided. They don't have enough lot coverage or enough, the lot size here is not enough to formally subdivide the lot, which is why they are going to the BZA. Staff finds that the site layout to be appropriate in this instance because the current configuration of the site is similar to what is proposed and because the new structures will be more in keeping with historic character of the district than what is existing. Here is the structure that faces 16th Street. It will be 28 feet tall and 31 feet 8 inches wide, which staff finds to be appropriate. The house's materials, window pattern, porch depth and roof form all meet the design guidelines. The carport will be one story and two bays wide and the carport will be accessed via the alley. Here are the side elevations for the 16th Street structure. And here is a structure that will face Boscoval Street. It will also be 28 feet, 28 feet tall, it will be about 34 feet wide. It will have a one bay, one-story carport, which will be accessed via a curb cut along Boscoval Street. And here are the side elevations for the Boscoval Street house. Because of the sewer easement, the house's depth and roof form is truncated. Staff, you know, finds that although this is not necessarily a common roof form, it's appropriate in this instance because it allows the front of the house to have a typical-looking roof form, but allows the, the structure to be shallower and stay clear of the drainage easement. Here are some perspective drawings of the two houses. And here are some photos. This section of Boscoval and 16th Street, there really is not a lot of historic context. This is part of the recently expanded Lockland Springs District. What you see around here are one-story structures that were typically built post-1950, which are non-contributing, and then a lot of two to almost three-story structures that were built within the last five years or so before the overlay. So, in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions, and this is assuming that the BZA will approve the two detached principal structures on the lot at their hearing tomorrow. One, that MHCC staff approve the finished floor heights of the two structures in the field. Two, staff approve all final material choices. And three, staff approve the location of the two HVAC units and other utilities for the site. With these conditions, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines. I'm happy to answer any questions and is the applicant here? And the applicant's here, too.
Okay, thanks, Melissa. Do any questions from Melissa?
Just a, Melissa, a quick one and maybe this responds to something I'm, I'm less familiar with. I think if you look at the left elevation, the two-by-two fixed windows on, I don't know which house it is, Boscoval, I'm trying to drill it, H4 would be the drawing number.
Is it the one on the screen? Is that what?
Yeah, left side. So, on the left side, you know, you've got a two-by-twos kind of square window, which I think is of proportion that is historically seen. And I know we've approved houses in the past with one-by-three windows, maybe in a bathroom or, you know, in some area and furniture and oftentimes, you know, modesty is, is reason given for those, but except as a transom, a ubiquitous application, or maybe not ubiquitous, but just application of that around a facade, to me, is not in keeping with, with openings and seeing this, many of them certainly. I wonder what the staff's opinion of that is.
Typically, on side facades, we are more concerned about the historic proportion of window openings and the pattern closer to the front of the house and we get more flexible towards the rear. In this case, the one that's closest to the front of the house is in a stairwell and that seemed to be, that was the way the architect wanted to light the stairwell. We thought since, since there is that one traditional window opening closer to the front of the porch, that having the one square window behind it in the stairwell was acceptable. Towards the back, again, because those are towards the back of the house and will be less visible, we were a little bit less concerned. The facade on the left, I should say, is on the interior block side, so it's not the corner lot side. So, it will be less visible than if it was on the other facade, which has a more traditional window pattern that is actually facing 16th Street, so that would be more visible.
Sure. And actually, I mean, to be clear, I don't have a problem with window proportions on either of these. It's really more the, the one-by-three proportion that's skinny and long.
Oh, okay, so am I, was I addressing the wrong windows?
Well, I just want to make sure we're, I guess we're talking about the same thing, that there seem to be numerous one-by-three foot windows.
Are these the ones you're?
Spread across this project.
Right. Yeah, you know, again, when we're looking at the window openings, we're primarily concerned with the front facade and then the kind of front portions, the front half of the side facades. So, we found for these that, you know, and like in this instance, on the side facade on the, on the top, the windows towards, towards the front of the house, towards the stoop or the porch are the more traditional window sizes and when you're seeing kind of those more horizontal, transom-type windows, they're less visible. So, you know, it's something the commission could discuss. Staff found them to be okay in this instance.
Thank you.
If I might be recognized, Mr. Chair.
This is a little bit unique in that you have a situation where you have the applicant here before actually getting the authority for the variance from the BZA. We had one that was kind of similar to this last month, I think, and so I wanted to just remind the board of the advice that I rendered with that in mind. And that is, this is, the best possible scenario is for the BZA to have already ruled before this board passes on it. However, that doesn't preclude the board from passing. If you do make a decision on this today, you can just do so contingent on approval from the BZA so that you have essentially created a condition of your own. The only way that that goes awry potentially is if the Board of Zoning Appeals also adds conditions and that those can, and if those conditions substantively affect whatever your decision is today, in that case, they would need to come back to you all. So, I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that situation and could think about that as you're discussing the, the matter today.
Okay, thank you.
Susan, thank you for pointing that out. I have the same thought I had last month, that it's procedurally in the wrong order.
And I'll, I'll take the blame for that. Typically, that is what we ask applicants to do, is to wait. This one, it seems a little harsh to make the applicant wait a whole month when the meeting's just tomorrow night. And then again, in talking with staff of the BZA, he felt quite certain that it would be approved since there are two existing homes and that they would very unlikely have conditions, they rarely ever do. And so, we took a chance and brought it to you and I take full responsibility for that.
No, no, I, I'm just glad I considered.
And if it makes the board feel any better, I'm also the attorney scheduled to attend the BZA meeting tomorrow.
I mean, also, along those lines.
Much better.
I think in this case, it's important that the record reflect that this, this is a hardship case and that there is a significant 12-foot-wide drainage easement across the site. There are already two homes on the site. This one is, maybe unlike any other lot in the county, I don't want to say for sure that it is, but certainly that this one, given the hardships associated with it, might cause us to consider it, where others we might not.
Okay, thanks, Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward and say anything, give us your name and address?
Name's Ken Cunningham, 1119 Mary Evelyn Court, Nashville. I've been working with Peggy Newman on the designs that you see here. I've been working with Robin and Melissa on the setbacks and making sure our designs complying with the historical overlay. And Robin, it's my fault, not your fault, that this is early. We have a very, very enthusiastic landowner that wants this sold. I have purchased this with the contingency that we can demolish the existing homes and build two new historical homes at this site. I think Melissa said everything, you know, about what, what the impacts are in the area. These are non-contributing structures that exist. We have a 15-foot-wide easement across that bisects the property in a diagonal fashion. So, tomorrow with the BZA, we're going to ask for them to approve us to rebuild two historical, single-family detached dwellings. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Open public hearing. Anyone that'd like to speak regarding this project, please come forward and state your name and address.
Bob Borzac, 1503 Woodland Street. I just wanted to compliment the developer and designer of this. It's nice where they're not, they're surrounded by two and three-story homes. They could have built McMansions there and they're not. They're a nice one and a half-story, I think, positioned well for that particular intersection. I don't know if, who's familiar with that, but there's a severe hill that goes down where those houses are. Kids love it because you get in a car and it's like going on a roller coaster. So, they've got a challenge on their hands, but I really do appreciate the fact that they are more consistent with the majority of the houses that are designed and built in the historic district. Just want to show my appreciation for that.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Discussion?
Move approval based on staff recommendation.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, please. I don't, I guess I don't want to let it pass that the, these one-by-three windows, they just, one or so, I don't know of a, they're not historically proportioned, and I think I can get used to one, maybe two. Each of these has, one has four and one has five. I think I understand why they're there. I'm just wondering, both from a cost standpoint and also from an aesthetic standpoint, I don't know that a one-by-three window costs any more or less than a two-by-two window, which is, there's certainly more examples of that. I haven't seen every historic home in this county or any other, but I know that that is typically the dimension of a transom, and when they become numerous enough to be noticeable on the facade, I don't know, to me, that's not in keeping with, specifically with the proportions of window openings.
Would you do some kind of amendment that...
Yep, maybe an amendment to kind of...
Reduce them to not more than two on any single facade and work with staff to accomplish that, something along those lines?
I think that, or even if a two-by-two was, if it was modest or allowed for whatever furniture placement or whatever reason there might be for those windows, a square window would be, I think, same amount of glazing, probably similar cost, and wouldn't necessarily affect the applicant negatively, I don't think.
If I could just jump in here and put in a desire we would love. This one's been tough for us. These windows keep coming up. Sometimes they're okay, sometimes they're not okay, you know, sometimes they're towards the back, and so we've recommended approval, but it's really been a struggle. And if you were to say, "These windows are just not appropriate because they don't meet historic proportions unless they are truly a transom window, ever," we'd be fine with that. Would you provide clarity for us?
Okay, Richard, would you like to, we have a motion in a second.
I amend my motion what Ben said. I'd like to amend my motion to include staff recommendations plus to eliminate the one-by-three windows.
Let's cap trip.
Maybe not that they go away, eliminate, I think would cause them to be less glazing. I think that the proportion of those would be more in keeping with, at minimum, a square or a two-to-three proportional rectangle width, or three-to-two minimum width to height.
My second.
All right, we have a...
Do you adopt? I think that's clear in our project.
Yeah, what we...
Yes, we greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, but I do want to make sure Richard knows, basically, we just changed the proportion of those thin windows.
Right. That's fine.
Okay. Okay, so all clear? All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next one is 1801 Woodland Street.
1801 Woodland Street is an application to replace a non-contributing house with a new duplex infill. This is at the corner of 18th Street and Woodland Street. The original proposal for the project requested a setback reduction. The applicant and the staff have worked together since the writing of the staff recommendation, and the applicant has revised the plans to reduce the width of the structure so that the width of the structure now meets the historic context and meets the setbacks, so a setback determination is no longer needed. And I'm showing here the revised drawings. The project is very, very similar to what's in the staff packet, the staff recommendation, except that the house has been reduced from 38 feet to 35 feet, and the site plan has been changed so that it now meets the base zoning setbacks.
About 10?
I'm sorry?
Was it 10 feet?
Yeah, so the setbacks, because it's a corner lot, the setbacks from 18th Street need to be 10 feet. Typically, on an interior lot, it's 5 feet, but because on a corner lot, it's typically 10 feet in residential neighborhoods. Here are the front and the rear elevations. The proposed duplex will be one-and-a-half stories and will have a ridge height of 27 feet above grade. Staff finds that the height matches the historic context. All the no-materials have been approved by the commission in the past, and actually, the commission approved a similar design of this house on Rudolph last month. But again, we look at, even if we've approved the structure before in one location, we always look at the context around it. So, the duplex infill will be oriented so that both units have front entries facing Woodland Street, which is appropriate. The left unit will be situated behind an enclosed stoop, which is 4 feet deep. While the design guidelines state that porches should be at least 6 feet deep, it is appropriate for entries behind a stoop to be shallower. The right entry is located behind a partial-width front porch that is approximately 8 feet deep. Although the entries to the two units have different configurations, staff finds that they are compatible with each other and that they are of equal prominence and therefore meet what we typically look for in duplex developments. Here are the two side elevations. And here are some context photos. There's one two-story structure across the street, and then there's a mixture of historic and nonhistoric one-and-one-and-a-half-story structures kind of around Woodland and 18th Street. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the infill with the following conditions: the finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of adjacent historic houses; staff approve all final material choices and colors; walkways be added to the street to each of the front entries; and staff approve the location of the HVAC units. So, with these conditions, staff finds that the revised drawings for the infill meet Section 2B of the design guidelines. Again, the applicant has agreed to, you know, all of the design changes that were mentioned in the staff recommendation. I don't believe that the applicant is here.
Okay. Any questions to Melissa?
I have, Melissa, has the applicant, they're showing a column elevation with Miratec trim. Is that an alternate, or is that just not used on the project? I didn't see it drawn or depicted in the elevations. And that'd be on A4? You may not see it on the screen.
Yeah, it's hard to see there, I'm sorry.
Is that part of the project, or is that just kind of alternate standard sort of stuff put on drawings?
I would have to check with the applicant, I don't know if I...
Nope, I'm sorry, it's on the second-story porch. That's where it is. Okay. On the rear elevation, the front elevation shows the pile asters kind of out in front of the brick base, which is, I think, kind of a, maybe a more typical craftsman-style detail. But then oftentimes in construction, we'll see them not, you know, you get the porch band, poured concrete band, they're not built that way. And then on the back, of course, they're showing a different detail there.
Right.
Just some clarity from the builder and the applicant, just so we...
While things are under construction.
So that we know what we're going to see out there and that you all are in, you know, it is in keeping with what we've approved. That's specific detail oftentimes that, because the block mason doesn't lay it up square, it takes on this funny proportion, and it just gets a little janky in the field sometimes.
Sure.
So, that's one to, just make sure that the applicant's clear on what they want to...
Yeah, we'll make sure to work with the applicant on that one.
If we approved a similar structure this last time, and I'm assuming that it would not have been in a corner lot, and the sides would not have been as visible.
Exactly, it was an interior lot.
The fact that left elevation, I guess it's the left elevation, will be seen very prominently. Did you guys have thoughts about trying to improve that elevation?
We looked at the window openings and felt that, you know, the window proportions met the typical window proportions. There was enough windows, there weren't wide expanses without window openings, and the roof form generally, you know, matches what we've approved in the past for roof forms. So, nothing jumped out of the staff as anything that we would request for changes, but if the commissioners have requests, we'd be open to hear them.
I mean, not to speak really derogatory, but I drove by this, it was almost like a motel. Just like, all the different rooms or something, it just seemed like there's some work that should happen on that one facade that would just make it more contextual.
Richard, would it, would you feel the same if the right elevation were, if they just mirrored the house? And I ask that question because you've got a little relief at the front porch that would be facing the corner, the porch, the front porch would be kind of at the corner, and then you still have the similar sort of thing going on at the back. I'm not, I don't know that that would solve, but I just wanted to ask that question. I think that maybe, I don't want to speak for the applicant, they're not here, that may be possible for them without a wholesale change, and I just wanted to get to the root of what...
You mean, just flip it?
Yeah, I think if you just mirror the plan, there's not a whole lot...
I think that'd be very helpful, yeah.
I have a porch on the front, of course.
Do you think, Melissa, they would...
I will certainly, I don't want to speak for the applicant, so, but I'll certainly, you know...
But we can make the recommendation.
Yeah, I can suggest it to him.
Motion?
Anybody want to speak? Are we in public hearing? Do we have a public hearing?
We're done with that. Oh, no, we haven't, sorry.
You want to speak?
Yeah, you sure can, actually, I'm sorry. Melissa, thank you, Melissa. And there is no buy from the applicant here, so, open public hearing, come forward. Sorry about that, sorry, jumped away.
I came already to argue about the width of it. But yeah, as I've been sitting back here, I live at 1716 Forest, so I'm, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it's Matthew Stitt's line. And so, we're across the alley and across 18th, so we're diagonal across the rear intersection, essentially. I don't know if you could pull up the aerial view.
Is that that?
Okay, okay. At any rate, so basically, across the top of that image. And another neighbor just sprung this on me last night, so I've been sitting back here reviewing the elevations, and I'm glad that Mr. Fletcher brought up the appearance along the side, because in reality, along 18th, this house will be incredibly visible as people come around the corner, and also, coming from Forest and coming up 18th, this is more or less a high point there, so it's really going to be up out of the ground. I mean, just in the, from the front to the back of our lot, from Forest Street to the alley between, we've got about a 12-foot rise. And then this would be, the rear end of this house, the street would be a couple more feet up from there, so if you couple that with the elevation of the house, that rear porch and the low-slung roof line at the rear, to me, it's going to be so visible and right out there on that corner that I'm concerned about that. And I was wondering about, could you switch back to the elevations? Yeah, no, that's perfect. I was wondering if they're, especially if they flip-flopped or mirror-imagined it instead, could they try to make that whole rear roof line look more like a shed dormer and actually extend out a steeper pitched roof coming down through, and then carry the bottom, the eve line from the front gable all the way back the sides over the freezeboard or the belt course between the first and second floors, and treat that belt course as a freezeboard instead, just to soften up the appearance along 18th. So, basically, at this point, those were my thoughts and what I'd like to comment on. You know, the point of having the mirror image, having the porch facing the corner is also quite nice with that front gable as a sort of secondary, you know, further away from the corner.
Is that time?
Yeah, that's fine, that's all I had.
Okay, that's it? Since you're the only one, I'll give you, I gave you another minute. Okay, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Public hearing? Okay.
Same comment I had on the previous one, but this time, we've got a single-unit duplex as opposed to two tall, skinny buildings, which we're starting to get too many of sneaking into Lachland area. And it's a refreshing departure from what's been going on. I'm glad to see it. Hopefully, I can work out all the other details with the neighbors and the visual part. It's going to be massive in many ways, but you compare that to a three- or four-story tall, skinny building, I'll take this any day. So, I thank the developers.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brett Withers, 1113 Granada. I would like to sort of add to what Bob said. A lot of the duplexes that we are getting in our overlays are symmetrical, which I generally think is really good. But I actually, again, would compliment the architect on this one. You do get away of having two sides of the duplex that look very different, and yet, they still tie together and look like one house. And so, it allows each side to have a different style, and yet, the building itself looks like one actual building, and that seems to blend in pretty well. So, just wish the architect were here, that I could say that to him in person, but would like to state that on record, that that seems to be an appropriate duplex design for the overlays that looks like, that looks like one house and yet is not symmetrical. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, thanks.
Just one more brief comment. I guess I just wanted to say...
You can come on up to the mic. Do you mind doing your name and address again?
Yes, certainly. It's Matthew Stitt's line, 1716 Forest Avenue. I just wanted to reiterate that, or make the point that, you know, we've been referring to this house in the literature as a one-and-a-half-story, and in reality, without doing something to the roof line, the back two-thirds of it really reads as a two-story house, because it's all in the same plane, up the same wall plane. So, yeah, if there's some way we could get them to change things. I realize that doing a roof line would eliminate a window on the one side, but they don't have a window on the porch side, so it may not be, at any rate, it'd be great if we could exert some pressure to do something there. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, I'm on closed public hearing. Discussion?
I think the, in response to the comment of, the public comment and the fact that, you know, we're making a little, a change to, you know, to open the porch to the, and address the fact that this is a, you know, that a building that is kind of probably a stock set of plans, or I'm guessing is, looks like it, I may not be, and apologies to the designer if it's not, but it's essentially a rectangle that's decorated. I mean, especially along the sides, that, well, as long as we're decorating it, is there a response to the fact that it's a corner lot on the one side, that this, you know, locomotive effect on the back, it'd be broken up maybe a little bit more? And not necessarily with, I mean, it could be a form, a form bump or something along those lines. Was there, was there a problem with the width? I don't want to go suggesting something that would bring it out of compliance.
The width or the depth. So, there was a problem with the width facing Woodland Street initially.
Okay.
They initially proposed 38 feet, which didn't meet the setbacks and was wider than the context. Staff suggested making it 35 feet, which they've done. So, we did not mention anything about the depth of the structure, kind of the 18th Street facade.
Okay. I think my point, Ben, you know, if there were an element, similar to the way they've done on the right elevation, where you've got this front-facing or side-facing gable that from, you know, a third of the way back is all in the same plane, is merely facade treatment of vertical corner boards and then siding in the same plane, would it, I'm suggesting to other commissioners who maybe have some concern about the, you know, the look of this and it being a corner building, is there some other recommendation we might give to the applicant that would lessen that impact and maybe respond to the fact that the site constraints that it is on a corner lot and this building needs a little different treatment than it's been given?
Are you suggesting another side gable at the rear?
I think that that might be one way to, you know, that would involve some window adjustment if they want to keep this, you know, the front shows double windows kind of centered about the, you know, about a gable that would involve some changes up top with window locations, but that's for the applicant to kind of work through those.
I think that would look a lot better, and it would also project more of the one-and-a-half story.
And that would be, that would be in keeping with their, you know, the necessity of width that they've already met. I don't want to send them in a direction that would be contrary to where they've already come from.
If there isn't any other discussion, maybe we can craft that up into a motion? But I don't want to stop being by if they want to make a discussion. Okay. Can you craft that into a motion, Ben?
Sure, I'll attempt.
Do you want to go and say something?
Okay. Okay. I'll move to approve the... I'll move to approve the application, 821 Woodland Street with staff recommendation, which included disapproval of step-back determination, but approval of the infill with the conditions 1 through 5 and add the additional recommend, or the additional requirements to the application that item 6, the, in order to address the site context in the corner lot, that the house be mirrored and that the front porch, the open front porch, address the corner of the lot where the two streets intersect and that some element be added similar to perhaps the front-facing gable, or if the architect can figure it out with window placement, the, a replication of the side-facing gable over the porch to break up that long two-story facade, being that it's, it, it had, the house has two fronts. So that would be items number 6 and 7.
What's 7?
7 would be the addition of the, 5 is the...
What about the rear, Ben?
Yeah, 6 is the mirroring of the plan and 7 would be the addition of a gabled element or some element that is in keeping with the other detailing on the house that would acknowledge its presence along the 2nd Street. How do we get to?
Second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next one is 204 South 11th Street.
This is an application for new construction of an office building on the vacant lot at 204 South 11th Street. The lot has been vacant since the previous building was approved for demolition in December of last year. The new structure will be 36 feet, 8 inches wide and 35 feet tall from grade at the front, a little bit lower at the rear due to the slope. It is in fact larger than the immediate neighbors, but the height and scale are compatible with nearby contributing buildings. In particular, the four square houses across South 11th Street, there's a row of four or five of them are of similar height and width. The, there's some context. The materials for the project have all been previously approved by the commission. The project meets design guidelines in terms of materials, roof form, orientation, and proportion and rhythm of openings. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions that the finished floor height shall be consistent with that of adjacent contributing houses. Approval of windows and doors, HVAC and other utilities will be located to minimize visibility and that staff approve roof color, masonry color, dimensions, and texture, finding that the application meets the design guidelines. That concludes my presentation.
Any, any more questions for Paul?
Paul, do you have shots of the, are my looking at the houses next to this lot, or...
At the top of this slide, standing at the address, looking to the left and right are at the top, and then 180 degrees, looking to the left and right across the street there at the bottom.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
Sir.
Is the applicant here and like to speak about the project or just say your name and address?
My name is David Baird, I'm with, I'm at 5007 Wyoming Avenue. I'm with the architecture firm Building Ideas, we're the architects for the project. This project is, is a bit unique in that the owners of the property are actively moving their business into this building and they've been thinking long and hard for about, well, since November of last year, about what they wanted to do on this property. And in talking with Tim Walker, we, after, after the demolition of the house, he was concerned about what might go here. And so we talked to him about what might be the most appropriate sort of structure to go here, since this is a, it's a mixed-use zone and small business is allowed to go here. And you look at the context around and there's some four-square houses, which are, which are two-story houses, and that seemed to be maybe an appropriate form for a small office use to be in. And so since then, we've been looking at the sizes of, of those four squares and looking at the needs of the, of the owner. And so this, this building, if you look at the analysis and findings, what we've proposed is, is sort of in the middle between the largest four-square and the smallest four-square in the context. We're about five feet shorter than the tallest four-square, we're about eight feet narrower than the, than the largest four-square. The other thing that we looked at is researching what, what sort of four-squares might, might be interesting. And the owners and I looked at various images around the country and came up with what's typical to those building types. And so we did a first pass of design and then we met with, with Tim and came away with about, about a dozen changes here and there that we, that we made that are presented today. I think everything is, is recommended except for these bay windows on the second floor corners, but we're not being asked to remove those. Let's see. The, I guess the, the main thing is that we want it to present something that was, that was contextual. It's got a full front porch that sets the two-story portion back from the back setback to work with the adjacent houses and to also sort of be similar in style to the four-squares next door. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, well, wait, any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing, anyone that would like to speak regarding this project, please come forward, say your name and address.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Brett Withers, I live at 1113 Granada. Just since I am here at this meeting, I'm really, just wanted to reiterate some points that were in a letter that was submitted by Michael Krailing, who's the president of the East End Neighborhood Association. I believe his home address is 1201 Holly and the letter was sent on September 17th. Michael had some concerns about the height of the structure. His interpretation of section 2B1 for height is that new buildings must be constructed to the same number of stories and to a height which is compatible with the height of adjacent buildings. And he, his letter sort of challenges whether or not the four-squares across the street are actually adjacent to the structure, since the houses on the, this side, the particular side of the street are mostly single-story or one-and-a-halves. And so he would appreciate some commentary from the commissioners on that. He also referenced the scale of the building overall, particularly with the depth of it as well as the height that that overall massing is large, even though it wouldn't necessarily be visible from the street, but it would, it would, it would look like a large building for sure. I think everyone would agree. And finally, he had some concerns that he expressed in his letter with regard to the parking area in the rear, which I can't recall exactly what those points are, I was trying to bring it up on my iPhone, but my, my internet connection isn't well. But again, I'm speaking on behalf of Michael Krailing from East End and he would appreciate deliberation on whether or not the four-squares across the street are truly adjacent to this structure and any commentaries on the massing on the building. Thank you.
Okay, any others? Okay, Dave, you didn't have any rebuttal, did you? You okay?
Yeah, I don't...
You do, you are allowed if you need to, so.
David Baird, 5007 Wyoming. I can't answer the adjacency thing. All that I know that, is, we've spent 10 months looking at all of the adjacent buildings and the four-square seem to be appropriate for staff to use for a commercial building in that area. And again, we just, we purposely made it narrower than, well, than we were allowed and, and shorter than we were allowed, or than the other buildings. And we worked a lot with them on, I guess, the porch depth and the, the elements that make up a four-square and the, I guess, the amount of windows and breaking up the long facade along the side with some, I guess you would say, one or two-foot bump outs that are still behind the, the side setback. And, and also just breaking up the visual nature of the building with different materials. That's one thing I discussed with, with, with Tim about, you know, trying not to make this building so heavy, even though it's, you know, a four-square. And so that's why we, we sort of broke up vertically with different materials and on the sides, we have these, these sort of bump outs that, that got changed to wood on one side and brick on the other, just so visually, it's just not a flat plank down the side, so, but, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward.
I'm Angie Lawless and this is Brandon Miller. We own this lot and we also own the one right beside it, 202 South 11th Street, which is where we currently have our business. And so I just wanted to make sort of a, I guess, a soft comment that we love this area, we want to stay here. Our business has been able to flourish here and we need a bigger space and we didn't want to move away. So it's been with paint, we've taken great pains to try to, you know, make this something. We've talked to the neighbors around when we were doing the demolition for a three-block radius, they seemed, you know, excited about it. They even signed a petition for the demolition part. Just this weekend, I talked to Mark and Patty Sanders, who own, you know, they've done a ton of stuff right in that area and they own the two four-squares across the street. They said they loved the design, so I, I don't have anything to add other than that, I just wanted you to know.
And so you are the ones that are actually... Okay.
Yeah, and we, I just, you know, I guess it's important to me to say like we love the area and that's why we're really trying to get our office to be able to stay in the area while building something that's respectful to the area.
Okay, great. Any questions?
You said you lived in, what, which one of these houses do you...
We, so we own and operate Wagon Hill Title, which is in the top right corner. So if you're looking at the empty lot, our office is immediately to the right. And we've been there since we bought in 2006.
Did you show your plans to your neighbors?
We told them...
Not show your plans, but I mean discuss your plans with your...
What we, what we talked to them about, which was the same thing that we talked to Tim Walker and that, about in the beginning was, you know, look, we want to try to get this demolished, we don't know it's going to be a heavy battle, but if we do, you know, it only works for us if we can get something two-story because we have to have more space and we would want to do something similar to the four-squares and they were all very accepting of that. Because, you know, right across the street, you've got the, the development shown in the bottom right, I mean, that's literally like right across the street and one to us and then right across the street and one to us that way starts, you know, three or four, four squares. And so, you know, I think for them, it was just kind of like, it was no big deal because of the overall context.
There's also a very tall structure being built that's going to be behind the office that also will, a pair of Five Coins projects, so that's also kind of the context. It's, it's very modern, very tall, so...
Behind your, your project?
Behind where this will be built, yeah.
It's like our, our two offices, I mean, you know, our two properties and then the alley and then that project. If you walk through the...
You can see it through the alley there, yeah.
Yeah.
That's one we approved probably six or nine months ago. It's big multifamily with retail, first floor.
That's a three-story project.
Is it going to be the, the one that's behind you, is it going to be coming towards you or, yeah, it is, I can see it now, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion?
I think given, you know, the base zoning or certainly what's anticipated to happen here, this one might coin a new building type, which would be an eight-square office building. But I, I mean, I think that you've got a mix already here of businesses that are occupying historic and contributing structures and that this one is, you know, a bit larger than the houses next door. I feel like it's evident that this applicant has, has taken pains within, within the realm of the base zoning and, and what is useful to, to make something that fits in. And then I'm happy to give my opinion about what adjacent means, but I think maybe I might defer to legal staff. Opinions are, there's, there's, there's six of them, six of them up here, I'm sure.
Well, that, it is a really highly visible site. I don't live probably more than four blocks from it. I drive by this, I drive down 11th every morning on my way to work. As far as adjacent goes, we decided long ago, and if you look in Black's Law Dictionary, adjacent does not mean next door, it means across the street, it means catty corner. So I'm not, the adjacent thing doesn't give me any pause. And I also think this commission a long time ago decided that Lachland was eclectic and when you combine that with the fact that this is a very commercial area, this, this one little stretch, it has been for, for some time now, I think more is naturally compatible. I mean, if something like this, you wouldn't, four blocks away in the middle of some, of a residential block, I think it would be just overpowering a lot, but here, I think it's just a different context. And I really like that they could have gone wider and taller, chose not to, and for me, that's, that forgives a lot of the, the fact that it is unusually deep, but again, going back to context and it does have that long facade, but we have these bay windows breaking it up and I really like the material choice. I think just it's clearly going to be very high quality, it's not going to be this clapboard barn. It's just going to be done the right way and I, I think it's really attractive, which is compatible.
Do you want to craft that into a motion?
Motion to approve based on staff recommendation.
Second. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
We don't hear that often.
Okay, 1026 Chickamauga Avenue.
1026 Chickamauga Avenue is an application to remove a double-wide trailer on the site and construct a new single-family residence. Actually, I think the double-wide trailer was removed over the weekend, I don't think anybody regretted it. The applicant has agreed to all the staff's conditions and the drawings that are, that I'll be showing represent the revisions incorporating the staff comments. The new infill will meet all base zoning setbacks. Because it has a partial width front porch, its front will be pushed back slightly from the two houses on either side. The two houses on either side have full width, like very deep front porches, but we've asked them to push back the front wall of the house, the walls of the house match up, which means the porch will be slightly back from where the porches are on either side, but we thought that having the walls line up was most appropriate. Here are the front and rear facades. New infill will be one-and-a-half stories with a height of 27 feet above grade, which meets the historic context. The primary cladding material will be five-inch cement fiber board. All the known materials have been approved by the commission in the past. You'll see here that there is one of those transom windows, it's at the rear. I think staff has approved those before at the rear, but that's something the commission can discuss. Here are the two side facades. Originally, the side facades in the packet did have a horizontal transom window, which the applicant has changed, and so the new drawings are here on the screen. Staff found that the altered window pattern meets the design guidelines and is fine with the two side facades. Here are some context photos. The top photos are the two Victorian houses on either side and then some other Victorian... The top photos are the two Victorian houses on either side and then some other Victorian hipped roof houses across the street and more photos of across the street. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the demolition of the trailer and of the new infill with the following conditions. The finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses. Staff approve the color of the shingle roof. A walkway be added from the sidewalk to the front porch steps and the HVAC be located on the side, on the rear or on the side of the house behind the midpoint of the structure. With these conditions, staff recommends approval.
Melissa, how tall, tall is this?
This is 27 feet, which I think the Victorian houses on either side, it's hard sometimes to get good estimates, but they're in the range of 26 to 28 feet. So there's a tall four square around the corner on Seymour. There's new infill further down in Chickamauga that are in the 28, 29 feet range. And that's above grade. The 27 feet is above grade, not above the foundation.
Question for staff is, is, you know, is, is on proportion of windows and proportion of window item, I think on the rear facade, is that, would it be helpful for staff if we just said no altogether to horizontal windows or is, is the rear facade kind of...
Although I did say it would be helpful to say no across the board, I don't know that in most cases the rear will ever be seen and it may not really matter.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clarification and certainly on multifamily where there are open parking lots and maybe more visibility, that would not necessarily be the case.
This is an interior lot, so it would be, I don't think you'll see the rear.
Our guidelines are pretty, and I think every district are pretty clear that we're to focus on the primary facades and if there's one in fourth place, it's the rear.
Is the left elevation visible?
I think the applicant has changed that one so we don't have the narrow window.
Oh, we don't.
On the, the new, the new documents that are part of the screen, but not part of your packet.
Less of the rear elevation doesn't really scream historic. Is that, are you guys comfortable with that?
I mean, again, I think the rear is not necessarily seen from the street, so we're, you know, we, it won't, it won't be visible, so we're usually much more flexible in the rear than we are in the front or the sides.
Nice if there would be like a dormer or two there. It just, it just kind of looks like an addition put on a ranch home or something.
Okay, is applicant...
I don't think the applicant is here, no.
Okay. Any more questions then from Melissa, especially with the applicant not being here? Okay. All right, thanks, Melissa. Open public, well, no, I'm from applicant, open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing, discussion? Motion?
Move approval with staff's recommendation. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion.
Sort of made up the address for this. It's between 2513 and, no, it's between 2515 and 2519. Metro records showed it as 2619. It didn't make sense, so I called it 2517. Seems more appropriate. So this is an application to construct a two-story house on a vacant lot in the Hillsborough West End District. The house that's proposed will be 35 feet tall with a hipped roof. This is actually two feet shorter than the historic house to the right, which is very similar form. Hipped roof, four square. This new house will be brick. In your staff recommendations, it says, I think I said something about the brick to grade and dormer needs to be pushed back as conditions. These drawings on the screen now reflect revisions. The applicant has met all of the conditions that we had, including walkway. Staff will need to still approve the material of the windows, the window selections and the color of the roof. Actually, that may even have that color of the roof, if you can read that. Staff recommends, I'll show that one more picture too. So that four square on the right, this one's very similar, but actually a little bit smaller. Staff recommends approval of this proposed new construction with the condition that staff approve the selection of windows and doors and the color and texture of brick prior to purchase.
Okay, any questions?
What is behind the house on the right?
I believe it's actually attached. It's, that's certainly something that, this was in the recently expanded portion of the overlay. So that's a four-square house with a attached, I don't even know, well, you can see it's got, there's like a, a bus there and an RV. It probably was a large garage. This lot was divided off of that, so I, and that house is being rehabbed also, so I, that there's a good chance that could go away, but nothing's come to us yet for that.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Is applicant here? Like to come forward and state your name and address?
Robert Thompson, Territorial Architecture, personal residence is 926 Woodland Street. Agree with staff recommendations, just here to answer any questions.
Any questions to the applicant? Okay, thanks.
You win for stamina.
Anyone else? Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion? Motion?
Yes. Yes, it's going to be on this side this time. You've had it too many times. I move with regard to 1706, 1708, Fourth Avenue North. Am I on the right one?
No, this is 2517.
I knew I was not on the right one, but I have heard it. 2517. Am I on the right one now? All right. Perin 2619-A, Ashwood Avenue. I move approval of the application subject to the stated conditions.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all from that side. Discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Any other business?
Very well done.
Were we going to rehear the, or not rehear? That's, okay, I wasn't sure if that got moved to the end. On the, as, as a reminder for us and for staff, that long skinnies on the sides and the front are, yeah, long skinny windows are not, not, not something that meet the guidelines.
Okay. All right. Me and you, Charles.